Good afternoon, councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies?
Mr. Chair, I advise that councillor Adaman will be absent today, and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillor Adaman be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,710th meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of May, 2023, be received, taken as read, and confirmed. Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,710th meeting of council held on 23 May, 2023, be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Our councillors, we have a public participant here today with us, Mr. Benjamin Wilson, who asked to address the chamber on supporting community refugee sponsorship groups. Good afternoon, Mr. Wilson. You have five minutes once your microphone is turned on. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Lord Mayor, councillors, I am Ben Wilson, and I am here today on behalf of the Welcome Project, a group formed under the auspices of Community Refugee Sponsorship Australia. We are ordinary Australians. We live in Brisbane. Most of us have lived in Brisbane for the majority of our lives, and our mission as a part of this organisation is simple. We want to welcome refugees as an additional intake to that offered by the federal government, and we are doing that as part of a pilot programme being run by the federal government, mirroring similar programmes in Canada, which since the 1980s has successfully settled, in addition to Canada's regular refugee intake, more than 300,000 additional refugees from around the world. I am here today to do two things. Firstly, I would like to thank this council, and in particular councillor Johnson, for her support, both in terms of the community grants that we've received through programmes offered by this council, and for the more specific advice that we have received from councillor Johnson in the form of various connections and individuals in the community that can help us. The second thing that I am here to do is to raise the profile of the work that we are trying to accomplish, to set out why we believe it's worthwhile, and offer what we believe are some of the things that this council can do into the future to assist both our programme and programmes similar to ours moving forward. We've been advised that sometime in June, an Afghan family of four will arrive in Australia. I say sometime in June because it's subject to the various bureaucratic hurdles that must be surmounted through the UNHCR, which means there is some degree of uncertainty, but we are eagerly awaiting their arrival. Once they arrive, we will greet them at the airport. We will take them to the short-term accommodation that we have arranged, where they will stay for six to eight weeks. We will help link them in with primary services, initial health care. We will enrol them in schools, and language training is necessary. We will help them find jobs. In short, we will do everything that would otherwise be done by the federal government department in supporting them and helping them to resettle within the community, and that is work that we firmly believe is worthwhile and is support that we will offer intensively for up to a year, at which point we hope they will feel settled enough in the community that perhaps we are not as required intensively, at which point we hope to welcome a new refugee family or refugee group. This is all possible through money that we've raised, through grants such as the one offered by this council, from friends and family, gifts of things like furniture and household goods from community groups, churches, mosques, and truly it's been inspiring how generous so many of the people who live in this city are in willing to support people who prior to us sending them an email, usually out of the blue, they hadn't heard of us. We want to do this because fundamentally, our group believe that Australia is and should remain a nation of generous people that is capable of supporting more individuals, and we are willing to put our money and our time where our mouth is in that respect. Which brings us to what ongoing support do we think that this council can provide? Obviously, we're still in the process of fundraising for our group, though we're quite close to our goal. Anything that we raise in addition to what we've already raised will go on to support other refugee families either elsewhere in Australia through community refugee sponsorship or any successive refugees that our group ourselves sponsor into the future. The main reason, and the main thing that we believe that this council can do, is support the longer term aim, which is initially the success of the pilot programme that the government is running, the success being evidenced by people willing to step forward, support refugees, and following that success to hopefully have the programme such as the one that we have chosen to be a part of become a permanent fabric of Australia's social and refugee intake landscape, such that one day, hopefully three decades from now, someone can stand before a different chamber and say that more than 300,000 people have been successfully resettled in Australia who otherwise might have languished. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks, Mr. Wilson. Thanks for coming in. Councillor responding, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Ben, thank you very much for that presentation and for telling us a little bit more about the Welcome Project. It is important and fantastic to hear that councillor Johnson has been supporting you, just as many of our colleagues right across this chamber support many organisations that help people coming to our beautiful city, and we know how popular that has become, and as you say, we are a generous people and we will continue to do so. One of the very central parts of what we do is, of course, our inclusive Brisbane plan, and that is something that we're very proud of, and some of the work that's been happening there actually fits absolutely perfectly with just what you've been saying to us today. Our plan details 101 actions to ensure that residents of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds can really enjoy what Brisbane has to offer. It's interesting that you say that there's a family arriving in June because that is when we will have Refugee Week in June, and I know that that is a truly popular one right across Brisbane. We have the Lord Mayor's Refugee Welcome Ceremony. I've attended that, have many of my colleagues in this chamber for many, many years, and it is just the most delightful ceremony, and everyone is so excited about the opportunities and the possibilities of a new life here in Brisbane. So we're very much looking forward to Refugee Week here in June, and of course, we also have the Lord Mayor's Multicultural Roundtable that also supports right across Brisbane the many, many people who come to this city and want to call it home. I really want to thank you once again for popping in today to tell us a little bit about the Welcome Project, and also to connect you with my team, who would be happy to meet with you and to talk a little bit more about how they might be able to support you, our community development officers, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you very much for coming in today. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson. Billy will see you out. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Atwood.
Oh, enter, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, yesterday Civic Cabinet considered a submission critical to addressing Brisbane's housing crisis, a key outcome of Brisbane's sustainable growth strategy. Can you please update the chamber on how our plan for Kuruipa will help build Queensland's most sustainable community?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Atwood, and thank you for the question on what is proposed in the thriving area of Kuruipa, just a stone's throw away from the CBD and close to so much in terms of infrastructure and transport, facilities, and as you pointed out, councillor Atwood, the area that has the opportunity to become Brisbane and Queensland's most sustainable community, and that sustainability under our proposal will include not only sustainability in the built form and the building, so when we're looking at electricity use, water use, we're looking at the need for buildings to be air-conditioned or heated, those sort of factors, but also in terms of the creation of walkable communities, the creation of car light communities, which Kuruipa has the potential to really be, and the creation of a place where people can do many, many things they wish to do without the need to hop in a car. And Kuruipa, we believe, will help achieve that aim and become a truly sustainable community. So in Civic Cabinet yesterday, we considered a temporary local planning instrument, which will be coming through to council next Tuesday, and that will obviously be up for debate in next Tuesday's meeting. Subject to what happens with that, we will then forward it on to the state for their consideration, and this is all about making sure we can fast-track an outcome at a time when housing supply is desperately needed. Subsequent to the TLPI consideration, we will also be looking to update our planning scheme to reflect the intent of the TLPI. And so this allows us to bring forward an outcome, and as councillors know, updating the planning scheme is a process that can take 18 months, two years, sometimes even longer than two years, and we don't have that time to wait to provide more homes in a sustainable way. The other thing I wanted to point out is going up in height levels in Kuruipa is an alternative to all the greenfield development we're seeing in a lot of the surrounding council areas. Most councils are meeting their housing outcomes and targets set by the state government through greenfield development. Most councils around us are doing that. We're taking a different approach.
Councillor Johnson, please.
And in fact, our plan will see more than 90%
Councillor Strunk, please. Councillor Strunk. Councillor Strunk, twice, please, enough.
I hear councillor Strunk groaning about development happening in his part of the city. I can assume that he's against new development in his part of the city, like his colleagues have been consistently, but we are for providing homes for people. But what I was pointing out is that more than 90% of the future growth in our city will be brownfield development or the redevelopment of existing areas, not greenfield development, not eating into green space or the removal of our wonderful environmental areas, but instead taking what currently houses a glass factory, a concrete factory, and a milk factory, and turning that into a wonderful, thriving, sustainable community. We're going up rather than going out, and it is the same principle that we'll be using in other well-located parts of the city as well, Carrendale, Indrapilly, Chermside, Garden City, also Tuong, and we're looking at Tomball as well. Those areas that are well-located with public transport, we will see new development occurring and more homes being built. But one of the critical things about this plan and our proposal is that new buildings won't be just more of the same. We're setting a new benchmark when it comes to sustainability and also community and public benefit as well. The buildings that will be going above existing height levels, so anything above what the existing plan shows, will need to meet the Green Building Council of Australia's five-star green star rating category, will need to incorporate greater
Councillor Johnston, please.
Greater greenery through the introduction of a higher green plot ratio. Will need to
Councillor Johnston, please, stop shouting out across the floor.
Will need to ensure more expansive green space, public realm, open spaces, and pedestrian plazas, and that's one of the other advantages of having taller, more narrow buildings, because you can provide a better public realm outcome at the end rather than a shorter, stout building. We expect the investment in public art and creative lighting. Additionally, the buildings will need to
Thank you. Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Collier.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee. Councillor Howard, the Lord Mayor recently confirmed at council's Homeless Connect event that more money is spent on the Living in Brisbane newsletter than on the signature Pathways Out of Homelessness programme. Just $1 million for homelessness and over $1.4 million on the Lord Mayor's newsletter. Do you think those sleeping rough tonight would think that that's good value for money?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you I thank councillor Collier for the question because it allows me to just put on the record how much the Shrinna Council is doing to support our less vulnerable people right across Brisbane. I want to begin also by sincerely thanking our wonderful officers who have been out there and really doing it very, very tough in the last few months. Can I just say, our public space liaison officers are amazing. We hear constantly from people just the amazing work that they do. We know that the Pathways Out of Homelessness programme has provided, everybody that has participated in that is just so grateful for what is happening there. They've even taken it to the state government to say, hey, state government, here's a programme that works, here's a programme that we want you to emulate. So our annual budget of $2.96 million for deliverables citywide. Homeless Connect has supported more than 20,000 people since 2006. Our PSLOs connecting homeless with the service providers, and our Pathways Out of
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Just on relevance, the question specifically related to the Pathways Out of Homelessness programme, which the Lord Mayor announced was just $1 million, and he's spending $1.4 million on his Living in Brisbane newsletter. So councillor Howard was asked, does she think that's good value for money?
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. The Chair is being relevant to the question.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just coming to the part about Pathways Out of Homelessness. It's $1 million this year, and under Labor, there was no Pathways programme. None. Zilch. Nothing. You know, it's really disappointing through you, Mr. Chair, when we come in here week after week to hear those on the other side.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
On relevance, the question was whether councillor Howard thought $1.4 million on Living in Brisbane versus $1 million on Pathways Out of Homelessness was good value for money.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. I believe the Chair is being relevant to the question. I don't uphold your point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Murphy, please. Please, councillors, allow the councillor to provide her answer in silence, please.
So, do I have the call, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you do.
Oh, thank you. I just wondered because there was a bit of conversation going backwards and forwards. So, Mr. Chair, through you, the million dollars that was announced is in addition to other monies that have been provided for this programme. This programme has been running now for, I think, four years, and it's a million dollars a year that goes into this wonderful, wonderful programme. The Lord Mayor has also announced a million dollars on Pinkerbah this year, in addition to the Pathways Out of Homelessness. The $1 million that was announced is for Brisbane Housing Company, Institute for Urban Indigenous Health, and the Youth Advocacy Centre. Three amazing organisations.
Councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier, please, stop shouting out.
Three amazing organisations who work collaboratively with other organisations to
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Cassidy.
On relevance, I know the Lord Mayor handed councillor Howard his pre-prepared answer on this, but the question was very
Councillor, Lord Mayor, please.
The question was very specific. Did councillor Howard think spending $1.4 million on the Living in Brisbane newsletter this year and $1 million on Pathways Out of Homelessness, good value for money? It's a very simple question.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. I heard the question. I don't uphold your point of order. The Chair is being relevant to the question.
Thank you.
Councillor Howard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Mr. Chair, you know, the Pathways Out of Homelessness grant is just one way that we are supporting those in this particular sector. We have our policy liaison, our public space liaison officers, and as I said before, I don't think those on the other side actually want to listen to the answer. They're so busy wanting to make a political point, and what we should be talking about, Mr. Chair, is how we help those that are less vulnerable. The Pathways Out of Homelessness programme has proven to be one of the best ways that we have been able to help those that are less vulnerable across Brisbane.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, last week we saw a poorly coordinated political stunt on a local road project that was championed by councillor Griffiths. Can you please update the chamber on the background of this project?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I thank councillor Hammond for her question? The road projecting that she was referring to is, of course, the Fernvale Road, Tarragindy Road, Homestead Street, and Beverly Hills intersection upgrade, which I have a map of here in my hand. It is a project that stands to benefit particularly pedestrians in that community, and it is a project that has been advocated for, championed by, and pushed by for a long time councillor Griffiths. Now, it was identified some years ago through the Local Area Network Improvement Programme for upgrading. Because there were some resumptions involved, that was financially 2021, 22, some resumptions were required to ensure that we had safe movement and safe line of sight for motorist and pedestrians, it was moved into the Intersection Improvement Programme to be delivered last week. Now, that work began, and I just want to make sure that people understand that this is a project we've consulted on, that we had provided the information for, and that councillor Griffiths was very much a part of, and I want to make that clear. We are likely to hear, as we often do from councillor Griffiths in the budget debates in a few weeks, as we do most years, that many projects come to LNP wards through the Suburban Works Programme, but only a limited number occur in Labor wards. Now, I don't necessarily subscribe to that opinion, but that's an argument that he typically makes, and this project has sat in his agenda at the second highest priority for some time, and I would like to just provide, I have a version of his submission to councillor Cunningham, which indicates that this project that we're discussing is his second highest priority. I'll be tabling that item.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Just seeking your ruling on the tabling that document. I was recently told by council and the Office of the Information Commissioner that budget submissions are treated as budget in confidence and couldn't be released, and councillor Wines has leaked it to the media, and he's now tabling this. Could I just seek your ruling on that?
Councillor Cassidy, thank you. You've asked your point of order. Thank you, councillor Cassidy. At this stage, I'll seek further advice on your question. In the meantime, I'll allow councillor Wines to continue answering the question, but I'll get a response back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and as I say, it's a project that's been championed by councillor Griffiths, and I, as a member of my committee, I was more than happy to accommodate him and his request and deliver this project for his community. As late as Wednesday last week, councillor Griffiths was advising council officers to proceed with the implementation as discussed. Now, I have no issue, and can I also, at this point, thank councillor Griffiths for his attitude in committee this morning when we discussed it? This is, I believe, a project that does have merit, and that there has been some, as councillor Hammond identified, some political grandstanding that has undermined the delivery, what is in many ways a worthy project. And the individual who has a lot of the blame has to be laid at their feet is, of course, the Minister for Transport and Local State Member. As we know, it's becoming increasingly clear that he's committed, that Minister Bailey is committed to bulldozing bushland in northwest Brisbane. It also appears that he's also comfortable bulldozing his own party colleagues through the projects that they are pushed in their community. And I note that there was a rally last week. Notable part of that rally was a number of signs criticizing the Lord Mayor, all of them on the reverse side of anti-Scott Morrison corporates. That was, and it's, I mean, you know, as, one must wonder what sort of people have those signs just lying around to make up the, yeah, I don't have any like that in my yard, but, and so it has to be considered that, once again, we're seeing the minister's commitment to retaining out-of-date roundabouts sits at the heart of his whole agenda. Not only will he protect the Kenmore Roundabout, which more than 1,000 people have signed a petition demanding that he return to the table and deliver something for that community, now in his own community, where his own councillor has said this is what's necessary for pedestrian safety, an upgrade of this variety, he stands with an outdated roundabout there as well. It is a very strange, a very strange scenario. Now, let us talk about what, so Minister Bailey has called for a roundabout to be returned to that location. Let's talk about what that means. So if council were to do what Minister Bailey is asking, the rate pace would be out of pocket to the tune of $260,000, which has already been spent on this project. On top of that, we'd have to put the project on hold, which would have a standard bill of somewhere around $30,000 a week. The original 50-plus-year-old roundabout was no longer fit for purpose, did not provide adequate safety for pedestrians, and does not provide adequate safety for cyclists. The new state government standards that his department would enforce upon us would mean that the old roundabout can't be put back in.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, there was parking chaos around the Queensland Tennis Centre over the weekend due to a major event and council's inadequate and misleading signage. Why won't council install automated overhead flashing signage at key entry points like they have at other major sported stadiums like Suncorp Stadium?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I understand councillor Johnston has asked this question in committee this morning and it's taken on notice to be answered.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
I absolutely did not ask this question this morning. In the compliance committee, I asked about fines that were issued. My question must be answered. I have not asked this question, as the Lord Mayor has just said.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Johnston.
And I'd like an answer.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Lord Mayor, do you want to reflect on that response, or are you happy with the response you provided?
Well, if she hasn't already put it on notice
Councillor, can you refer to councillors by their titles, please?
Councillor Johnston hasn't already put it on notice, then I will take that on notice and make sure that she's provided with an appropriate response.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, we just heard from councillor Wines about how councillor Griffiths spectacularly backflipped on a local road project in his ward, one he has championed. Are you aware of any other examples of this type of behaviour in your committee?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to thank councillor Hammond for the question. Well, councillor Wines, it certainly does appear that councillor Griffiths is backflipping all over Maruka Ward. Just one kilometre down the road from the roundabout councillor Wines spoke about, councillor Griffiths has flip-flopped on his position on an important local issue, the heritage protection of the Maruka Wall Workers Estate. I know I have previously talked about the process related to this area and how the TLPI instrument works and how it is put in place. However, Mr. Chair, it appears that councillor Griffiths has forgotten this process, but I will refresh his memory. It was during 2021 when we undertook consultation on the draft strategy for the Nathan Salisbury, Maruka area, that the estate was identified for further investigation and to update the protections, including retaining the intact streetscapes.
Councillor, excuse me, councillors, if you want to take a conversation, ask your councillor to go outside, councillor Johnston. Councillor Allen.
Okay.
Councillor Allen, you have the floor.
Not only did we receive feedback from the community supporting the protection, but councillor Griffiths also made a submission. Mr. Chair, I read directly from councillor Griffiths' own submission. The character homes need to be saved and protected in both Salisbury and Maruka. Residents want to retain existing streetscapes across the suburbs, with many residents saying this is the reason they bought into the suburb in the first place, and this is the reason they bought into the suburb in the first place and feel like they have been sold out. Council listened to both the community and councillor Griffiths, and after further investigation and review by council's Heritage Advisory Committee, proposed the precinct for heritage listing, and a TLPI was put in place as an interim measure.
Point of order.
But according to councillor.
Excuse me, councillor Allen, point of order to you.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Okay, councillor Griffiths, you can't take a claim to be misrepresented during question time, you're entitled to ask a question.
But according to councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffiths, this TLPI was not a council initiative. It was the result of, and I quote councillor Cassidy, "It's obviously before us today because of the strong advocacy of councillor Griffiths." Even councillor Griffiths in this very chamber strongly supported the TLPI, which incidentally was unanimously supported. And I quote a couple of points made by councillor Griffiths at the time. Number one, it's really good that we are looking after and protecting these homes. Number two, I think the fact that we're preserving this very small estate but very significant in terms of its impact and history for the area is really good. He further said, "I worked really hard," as was mentioned, "worked really hard with local residents in terms of talking about the Maruka, Salisbury, Nathan local plan." It was the consultation perhaps that councillor Griffiths undertook that he referred to as tokenistic over the weekend in his media. Councillor Griffiths certainly wouldn't be calling the consultation undertaken by council to date on this neighbourhood plan insignificant. The consultation to date included three information sessions attended by 272 people, 271 written comments, 1,118 surveys, and 356 drop a pin map comments. However, in spite of strongly supporting the TLPI in the past, councillor Griffiths has done one of his increasingly common backflips. Over the weekend councillor Griffiths said, and I quote, "The protection had gone too far and called for the TLPI to be removed," the same TLPI he strongly advocated for. The Maruka War Workers Estate is an important issue for the heritage of the city and local residents.
councillor Johnston, please.
And local residents.
councillor Johnston.
It's an established process that needs to be followed. To have councillor Griffiths all over the place on this matter contradicting himself and not properly informing his residents of the fact is far from helpful. We would expect more from an experienced councillor. Instead of councillor Griffiths doing a major backflip on his position on this heritage protection, I would rather the councillor Griffiths found his way down George Street and call on his Labor colleagues in the state to respond to both the draft neighbourhood plan and also the qualified heritage amendment which includes this TLPI. These two amendments have been with the state government awaiting their first interest check. These were submitted 175 days ago and 266 days ago respectively. We are awaiting a response to be able to continue the planning scheme amendment process.
Thank you councillor Allen, your time has expired.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you deputy mayor.
Mr Chair, I just want to ask a question if you believe it is suitable behaviour for a councillor to race across the other side of the chamber, to aggressively ask a question of a female councillor, when this is not the first time it has been done.
Deputy mayor, that's not a point of order. Yeah, so, and I asked councillors if they want to have a conversation to take it outside, behind the doors, so that was my request at the time when I observed that behaviour.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Sit down, I will sue you. What you have done is outrageous. Outrageous councillor Adams. You need to stop her from making these unfounded allegations. It is not acceptable. I will not put up with it.
Please councillor Johnson, councillor, that wasn't a point of order you were raising. Councillor, to your, to your point councillor deputy mayor, I didn't hear the conversation that followed. If there are other avenues that the councillors involved want to take it through, they should do so. It's not appropriate for me to make a ruling because I didn't hear the conversation.
I was just asking a question about behaviour because it's not the first time.
And I asked if there were any conversations that need to be had outside the chamber to take them outside councillor.
This is outrageous behaviour. No, I'm not putting up with it. She did this last year as well. We know, and councillor Marks knows, that I just spoke to her, and she knows that I did not do anything wrong. It is not outrageous that the deputy mayor is brought out as an inappropriate attack dog in this place.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Howard. You're shouting out across the floor councillor Johnson, I ask you to sit down.
Because I'm being maliciously maligned by the deputy mayor yet again, and you will do nothing to stop it.
Councillor Johnson, sit down. Councillor Howard, point of order.
People, the very, the very person in this chamber who complains about the behaviour of others is displaying very inappropriate behaviour, and I ask for you to move on.
Councillors, there are issues that have been raised.
No, I'm sorry, no. It is not acceptable. If this is what's going on, if I even speak to an LNP councillor in this place, if I even speak to a councillor, the deputy mayor stands up and accuses me of inappropriate behaviour, that is absolutely not appropriate. It is her behaviour that is the problem here, and it is not right. I will not be attacked for simply speaking to somebody. And look at the deputy mayor, laughing with her head down. She thinks it's funny to put this on the record. It is inappropriate and wrong.
Councillors, councillors please, councillor, deputy mayor, can you call for an adjournment please while we raise this issue and I'll get some advice.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move for adjournment until the chamber settles down and the bells ring.
Thank you. Deputy mayor has asked for an adjournment, seconded by councillor Wines. We call for a vote on the adjournment, all in favour of an adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Thank you. Thank you councillors, I'm going to start with a response to the point of order raised by councillor Cassidy in relation to the document that you asked to not be tabled. I uphold your point of order. That document shouldn't be tabled. My understanding of the, of the advice that's been provided in the past, councillor Wines asked you to withdraw that document from the table.
Happy to withdraw the document.
Oh, I can't rule on that councillor Cassidy, I'm sorry. I can only rule on what's happened.
Point of order.
What's happened, your point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, just seek your ruling on the adjournment we just had, which was moved by the deputy mayor, for an unspecified time, and I quote, "until the chamber settles down," or "until the bells are rung." So who makes the judgement around whether the chamber has settled down? Is that an appropriate adjournment?
councillor Cassidy, it was pretty clear that was unsuitable meeting conduct in all areas of the chamber. I asked for the adjournment to be called to allow a break in what was happening so that we could, to those words, settle down, so we could continue with question time. I don't uphold that point of order. I think it was appropriate at that time to take a break in proceedings to allow for us to reset and to continue with question time. In terms of the behaviours that was going, that was going on across all sides of the chamber, it was unsuitable meeting conduct in my opinion on all sides. There were no actual points of order being raised, so I can't rule on those matters that were being shouted out, and I, so there's no point of order that I can rule on in that regard. I'd like to return to question time. councillor Cassidy.
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Both councillor Massey and myself moved a division in response to the motion that you asked the deputy mayor for, and you refused or failed to acknowledge that. I move dissent in your failure to recognise our, our call for a division.
Okay. A motion of dissent in an earlier ruling has been moved by councillor Johnston?
Yeah. No, was that? She's just, point of order, Chair. Chair, can you just seek a ruling as to whether a dissent motion after an adjournment has been happened and after the immediate issues, it's like literally 10 minutes ago now, whether that's actually valid?
Look, I'll go to the issue you've raised. I think a dissent motion has to be seconded as well.
Second in.
Okay, so I'll, to your point of order, councillor Murphy, I won't uphold your point of order. Let's divide on this dissent, this dissent request, this dissent motion, and I'll call for a division, ring the bells please, oh no, he's here. Okay, we'll move, move to, can we move straight to the vote?
All in favour.
Yeah, okay, without dividing, okay. Move to the vote on this dissent motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it. Thank you. councillor Cassidy, you have the floor for question time.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to councillor Cunningham. councillor Cunningham, people are doing it tough. The average resident can't afford champagne and oysters like the deputy mayor suggests they can. What rates relief will your LNP administration offer residents in the upcoming budget, or will you just keep jacking them up like year on year on year?
councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair, and I just note that the leader of the opposition called me just councillor Cunningham, Chair of Finance and City Governance, for the record, that is councillor Cassidy. So I thank you, Mr Chair, and for the opportunity to talk. Sorry, Mr Chair, I thought I heard laughing. Sorry, my apologies, I'll continue.
councillor Cunningham, please, you have the floor, please.
I welcome the opportunity to take another Dorothy Dixer from the opposition about rates and the history of council rates. Now, Mr Chair.
Point of order. Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
On relevance, I'm talking about the upcoming budget and what rates relief this LNP administration, we're not talking about 20 years ago. councillor Cunningham, we're talking about 2023, when average residents are struggling with cost of living.
councillor, councillor Cassidy, I don't uphold your point of order, the chair has been relevant to the question.
Mr Chair, the budget is on the 14th of June. councillor Cassidy is welcome to mark that in his calendar, and he'll just have to wait.
Further questions? councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. councillor Howard, this week is National Reconciliation Week, a time for Australians to learn about our shared history, cultures and achievements. Can you please update the chamber on what the Shrima Council is doing to support National Reconciliation Week?
Thank you. councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Landers for the question. And of course, this week is National Reconciliation Week, and it is an incredibly important time of the year for all Australians as we come together to learn about our shared history and work towards achieving reconciliation. The day before National Reconciliation Week begins is National Sorry Day, a solemn day held each year on the 26th of May, when we all come together as one in recognising the hurt and sorrow caused to the children and families of the stolen generations. Each year, I join the Lord Mayor in our annual National Sorry Day ceremony, and each year I am moved by the stories of the brave men and women who've shared their experiences of the stolen generations. This year was no different, and it was an honour to share this solemn day with our elders and to hear from Auntie Bessie. I thank Auntie Bessie and the many other men and women who continue to share their stories with us so that we may all appreciate the importance of working together to create a more just, equitable and reconciled country for all. In recognition of the children and families of the stolen generations, council installed six plaques in 1998. Each site was chosen following consultation with elders according to cultural and historical significance, and each plaque has a dedicated committee who coordinate and deliver educational activities on the history of the stolen generations as part of the dawn ceremonies each year on and around National Sorry Day. As National Sorry Day marks the start of an important journey to reconciliation between all Australians, it also marks the eve of National Reconciliation Week, which began on the 27th of May and happens each year to commemorate the anniversary of the 1967 referendum, when Australians voted to remove clauses in the Australian Constitution that discriminated against Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples. During National Reconciliation Week, council joins the nation in hosting a range of activities and events to help us all learn more about our shared histories, cultures and achievements, and explore how we can all make our mark in Australia's reconciliation journey. Last week, we hosted artist talks for Reconciliation Week at Berunga Gallery. On Saturday, we hosted a special storytime and craft activity at Mount Omni Library for our little ones. Griffith University's Queensland College of Art also hosted a First Nations weaving technique session at their campus in South Brisbane. Aboriginal Art Co, together with Museum of Brisbane, hosted a First Nations design market at Fish Lane. Today, children from across Brisbane had the opportunity to be immersed in their natural surroundings and build nature confidence through bushwalks and storytime at Carrawatha Forest Park and Downfall Creek. Tomorrow, in the Queen Street Mall, children's knowledge stories will be told by narrator Vinken Newgy of the Kwandamooka Nation, joined by Dean Tyson, firestick man and celebrated didgeridoo musician. And may I also say here, through you, Mr Chair, that Brisbane remains the only capital city in Australia to host a weekly gathering right in the heart of the city, and I encourage everyone on a Wednesday at 12 o'clock to pop along to the Queen Street Mall and to really enjoy the many, many activities that are held there each Wednesday. We also have Reading for Reconciliation at Mitchelton Library tomorrow afternoon, and on Sunday, you can join a gentle guided walk at the Boondore Wetlands Reserve through the beautiful circuit there. We can hear from our artist Maria Watson Trudgett at Garden City Library as she says, shares knowledge of her Aboriginal culture and speaks about her paintings and country. And little ones can join the reconciliation journey through our first five forever Jarjem Storytime session at Brackenridge Library, and I know that that has become a huge popular event. Of course, Sunday, the 3rd of June also marks the end of National Reconciliation Week as we commemorate the historic Mabo decision in which a High Court of Australia recognised Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander peoples right over their rights over their lands and waters, paving the way for native title. To commemorate Mabo Day, all of our assets will be lit in the colours of the Torres Strait Islander flag to commemorate Murr Island man Eddie Mabo. And on National Sorry Day and on the first day of National Reconciliation Week, we lit up our assets in the colours of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags, and did so again last night. Since last week, residents have been joining in the spirit of National Reconciliation Week, lots of activities and events throughout the city with people of all ages.
councillor Howard, your time has expired. councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is directed to the Lord Mayor. Earlier this morning, as residents across Kirilpa and West End slept, you publicly announced your plan to scrap existing building height limits for Kirilpa and parts of West End. 30 storeys for Musgrave Park and Hocken Street, which is part of West End, 20 to 15 storeys for Montague Road. On top of that, there are three areas without any specific height changes, so this could mean anywhere between or up to 274 metres, and also one yellow bit without any information, and it's not even on the key. In this proposal, the LNP administration are planning to scrap neighbourhood plans and support building on flood plains, double to triple the current height limits and maybe more. My question is.
Point of order, Chair, is there a question?
councillor Hutton, councillor Massey, if I can ask you to get to your question quickly, please.
We're here. Has there been any community consultation or engagement before the release of this unclear pan, plan with current residents that will be forever impacted?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Massey for the question, and I have to say, it's not surprising to have an anti-development, anti-house building question from the Greens. We know the Greens' destructive policies, where they claim that they are for the provision of more housing, but they oppose it at every single opportunity.
Just a minute, Lord Mayor. Point of order to councillor Massey.
The question was on consultation.
Councillor Massey, it was a nearly minute-long question with lots of elements to it, the Lord Mayor has been relevant to the question.
Mr Chair, nothing happened while the residents of Brisbane slept last night, in fact. What happened was the implementation of this document, which was released many months ago, highlighting exactly what we proposed to deliver at Kirilpa, Brisbane's most sustainable new community, and today, we have confirmed that next Tuesday in council, there will be a debate on the proposed TLPI, as I mentioned earlier in question time. But there were a couple of other claims that I want to just refer to in councillor Massey's question about building on a floodplain. It's interesting, this sort of nimby attitude, we're seeing this nimby attitude, which conveniently ignores the fact that a large part of Brisbane is built on a floodplain.
Councillor Massey, you need to ask for a point of order first, before shouting it out.
Sorry, Chair, point of order.
Point of order, councillor Massey?
The question was on community engagement.
Thank you, councillor Massey, I heard your question, I'm hearing the Lord Mayor's answer, the Lord Mayor has been relevant to the question.
Mr Chair, as you know, councillor Massey made a range of claims in her question, which actually had nothing to do with the question that she finally asked, but I have the right to refer to those claims that she raised. So this issue of building on a floodplain.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Collier.
Councillors should be referred to by their correct title, not she.
I uphold your point of order, Lord Mayor, if you can refer to councillors by their correct title, please.
Councillor Massey made a range of different claims in the preamble to the question, and I am referring to those claims, which obviously have some relevance, given that councillor Massey raised them. Now, this idea that there shouldn't be any building in a floodplain, which councillor Massey is quite clearly putting forward, is something that needs to be addressed head on. It is.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Massey.
I've never said there shouldn't be no building on the floodplain.
Councillor Massey, you asked a long question, multifaceted question.
Sorry, claim misrepresentation.
The Lord Mayor has been relevant to the question.
Thank you, look, I'm glad to hear that councillor Massey is open to building on a floodplain now, because that is something that we've seen very, very different views from different Greens Party representatives, whether it is Max Chan-Lamayda as the federal member, whether it is councillor Massey's predecessor, Jonathan Sri Ranganathan, they expressed strong opposition to building in floodplains. The reality is, a large percentage of Brisbane is built on a floodplain. This is something that is a component of our development as a city, and it's not something that we can suddenly back away from. In fact, 60% of the Brisbane CBD is built on a floodplain. So the question is not whether we should build on a floodplain, but it's how we build on a floodplain, and that's very much what we're addressing in our Kirilpa TLPI, as we're doing in other parts of the cities as well, to make sure that the building is flood resilient. The building is done in a way that takes into account future natural disaster risks or future climate risks in the way that it is built. But as I pointed out earlier today, and also reconfirmed now, the process here is that we are in the depths of a housing supply crisis. We're in the depths of a housing supply crisis.
Councillor Massey, please.
And what we're doing is, we're fast-tracking the provision of new homes for people, and while at the same time, we will be updating our planning scheme. That will involve all of the regular consultation that is required to update the planning scheme, so both of those things are happening in parallel, but we know, and as I mentioned before in question time, updating the planning scheme is a process that takes 18 months, two years, two and a half years, sometimes even three years. That will not help us get out of this crisis situation with housing, that will not help us boost supply, and we are very committed to making sure we do boost supply in the right areas, in a sustainable manner. Now, we've been very clear that, and we put it out not just in recent times, but also in the past as well, in fact, as long ago as probably around a decade ago, that Kirilpa is one of the best-located places in Brisbane to have more homes and new mixed-use communities coming in. And we've made it very clear over a long period of time, over a decade in fact, we've made it very clear that this is part of our approach, and we will be implementing this so we can provide new homes, but also there will be an updated planning scheme which will involve community consultation.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, your time has expired, and that ends question time. Councillor Massey, did you have a point of misrepresentation in your claiming?
The claim that I've publicly said anywhere that I don't believe in developments on floodplains.
Okay, thank you.
Which is untrue, there's no public record of me saying that.
You've made your point of order. We now move on to Establishment and Coordination Committee report, Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair, move suspension of standing orders to move a motion.
Okay, you have up three minutes to establish why you couldn't put this on the notice paper earlier.
Yes, sir, the motion's here if you wanted.
I need first to hear your argument for why it couldn't be on the notice paper.
No worry, then. I move that, given the extensive community concern regarding the removal of the roundabout at the intersection of Tarragindy Road, Ferndale Road, Homestead Street and Beverley Hill Street, that Brisbane City Council commits to having the design independently reviewed, taking into account community feedback.
Okay, the motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules, all in favour of the suspension of standing rules?
No, no, I haven't finished, I've just moved the motion.
Well, I thought that was your argument for the suspension of standing rules.
Oh, no, no, so I'll continue on, I just was giving you the motion, so yeah.
Okay.
You always want to, I'm happy to give it the motion. Council has begun this project at this intersection last week, as previously raised in the meeting, and certainly residents are raising many concerns, particularly in relation to pedestrian and vehicle safety, and certainly I'm seeing a lot of that feedback. Unfortunately, the administration isn't.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor.
My understanding is that it's to establish why this could not have been put on to the agenda, and that's what we now.
The councillor has up to three minutes to establish the reason and rationale for that request for the suspension of standing rules.
And I'm saying that, I'm saying even today, even today, I'm receiving a lot of feedback from residents about the concern about pedestrian and vehicle safety with the works Brisbane City Council is undertaking at this intersection. I have been contacted by hundreds of residents, many today, who've had to cross between my ward and councillor Adams' ward as pedestrians, and they want to do so safely. Now, I supported changes to the intersection based on officers' advice, and I'm aware that councillor Adams also supported the changes at this intersection based on the technical advice of officers. But I repeat, my concern, and what I'm bringing to the chamber, is that the changes that we do need to be ensuring that it is safe, not only for pedestrians, but safe for vehicle movements as well. In the last day, I've had senior technical officers, engineers, also academics, tell me that they would not sign off on this project, that it is not safe for pedestrians and it is not safe for vehicles. I've had police contact me and also given me the same logic. I've had the local state member, who is the Minister for Transport, also questioning the engineering advice provided by Brisbane City Council. And I have residents from councillor Adams' ward in the last day.
Councillor Griffiths, your time for establishing the reason for seeking a suspension of standing rules has expired, so the motion is for the suspension of standing rules, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Griffiths, can you circulate your motion, please?
Yes.
And move your motion now.
Okay, so thank you for that, Mr Chair, and thank you to the administration. I move that, given the extensive community concern regarding the removal of the roundabout at the intersection of Tarragindy Road, Ferndale Road, Homestead Street and Beverley Hill Street, that Brisbane City Council commits to having the design independently reviewed, taking into account community feedback.
Seconded.
Thank you, motion has been moved by councillor Griffiths and seconded by councillor Collier, that this motion become the order of debate in the council, given, and I read it, given the extensive community concern regarding the removal of the roundabout at the intersection of Tarragindy Road, Ferndale Road, Homestead Street and Beverley Hill Street, that BCC commits to having the new design independently reviewed and taking into account community feedback. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you. Can I check, Mr Chair, how long do I get to speak, is it?
You've got 10 minutes.
10 minutes, okay, thank you, I won't use it. So the purpose of this motion is, over the last week or so, we have begun work on a new, we removed a roundabout at the intersection of these said streets, and we are replacing that with a four-way intersection. This design and this.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor.
I move that the debate on the motion now, before the meeting be adjourned until the end of the council's meeting today.
No worry.
Thank you, we have a motion moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that this motion be moved to debate at the end of today's agenda. All in favour of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors, we move to.
A point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
I move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move a motion.
Seconded.
Okay, councillor Cassidy, you'd like to move a suspension of standing rules, please establish your reason for wanting to suspend standing rules.
Thanks, thanks very much, Chair, this is a very, very, very simple issue, but a very important issue that we can all get behind today, given what the Lord Mayor has just talked about. I would like to move, if the standing orders of this meeting are suspended, that Brisbane City Council notes its support for the federal government's Housing Australia Future Fund. We just heard from the Lord Mayor about 10 minutes ago, that we're in the grips of a housing crisis, he said, sorry, in the depths of a housing crisis, so we need to do anything and everything we can, this is extremely urgent. One of the things that we can do, of course, are planning changes, the Lord Mayor's talked about that at Kirilpa specifically. The other thing we can do, and something the Lord Mayor and councillor Howard and others in the LMP talk a big game about, they talk about advocacy and calling on other levels of government to do things, so we think that's an important thing that should be done as well. And council is a big council, Brisbane City Council is a big council, we have a big voice when it comes to these issues. Brisbane is the epicentre at the moment of the housing affordability crisis. It's inconceivable at the moment that we have the LMP, the Greens and One Nation Party on some unity ticket opposing new housing for First Nations Australians, for veterans and for women and children fleeing domestic and family violence. So a very simple thing that we can do today in calling on Peter Dutton, his Liberals and Nationals, Adam Bandt, the Greens and Queensland's One Nation Senators, to get in and support the delivery, the urgent delivery of affordable housing for vulnerable people.
Thank you, the motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it, councillor Cassidy, please move your motion, and have you got, can you circulate that?
Yeah, I've got it here. I move that Brisbane City Council notes its support for the federal government's Housing Australia Future Fund.
Seconded.
Thank you. So the motion before us moved by councillor Cassidy is that Brisbane City Council notes its support for the federal government's Housing Australia Future Fund, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. The Albanese Government's $10 billion Housing Australia Future Fund will see 30,000 social and affordable homes built in its first five years.
Point of order to you, councillor Landers.
I move that the debate on the motion now, before the meeting, be adjourned until the end of today's council meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you, we now have a motion for the moving of this motion and this debate to a time at the end of today's agenda, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors, Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 22nd of May 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 22nd of May 2023 be adopted, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move on to the items on the agenda, just wanted to touch on a few issues that were raised in question time. First of all, councillor Cassidy's question about rates and what might happen with rates in the budget, or what rates relief might come through the budget. Now, we see this every year, where councillor Cassidy or others try and preempt what might come out of the budget, and as councillor Cunningham said, that he'll have to wait to see until Budget Day, but here's what he can expect. He can expect a continuation of our record on keeping rates down. Our record, which saw the very first rates freeze in 35 years, our record, which has seen Brisbane very clearly offer the cheapest residential rates in South East Queensland, our record, which has time and time again run a balanced budget, so that we are not dipping into future budgets when it comes to operating expenses, and our record, which has never, which has never delivered 6% rate increases on four occasions like the Labor Party has delivered. And so you can expect a continued focus on responsible financial management and doing everything, everything possible to keep rates down. And so my target is to keep rates down, councillor Cassidy. My target is to keep rates down.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
And my target is certainly less than councillor Cassidy's target of 6%, so, or maybe inflation, I don't know, but we will continue working hard to do everything possible to keep rates down, unlike the Labor Party, which does everything possible to drive rates up, time in, time out, at all levels of government, whether it's rates or taxes. Councillor Cassidy, you can be assured that we will continue that, but also, I know that there is some concern amongst Labor councillors about what they claim is not enough funding for the Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme, and this is a classic one. They tried to juxtapose funding that goes into Living in Brisbane with Pathways Out of Homelessness. Well, that's an interesting one, because it was actually the Labor Party that introduced Living in Brisbane. The Labor administration introduced Living in Brisbane. Now, we've obviously de-politicised it from the way that they used to operate it, because articles throughout Labor's Living in Brisbane publications would refer to elected councillors and quote from them, and say it would be, the Labor Chair of Planning, such as Tim Quinn, it would quote from him in articles throughout Living in Brisbane. Councillor Hinchcliffe was quoted, councillor Flesser was quoted, councillor Maureen Hayes was quoted in Living in Brisbane. They treated that document as a purely political tool, which they used to promote their own councillors right across the city. We've taken that out of it, we've de-politicised it, and we've made it, we've made it, we've made it, the back of councillor Landers' head is irrelevant to this, is irrelevant to this, and how do you know it was councillor Landers? You're looking very closely, obviously, but certainly there was no mention of councillor Landers, you can't even see her face, but the reality is.
Councillor Cassidy, please, stop shouting out.
We won't be seeing a return to the Labor days, which mentioned lots of Labor councillors in Living in Brisbane. But what I can tell you is, this important accountability tool, which costs less than 25 cents per household per addition, and keeps the community up to date with what we're doing on their behalf, and how we're investing money right across the suburbs of Brisbane, with 86% of all budget funding going into the suburbs of Brisbane, we will continue to let the people of Brisbane know what is happening in their city and what we are doing on their behalf with the money that they contribute to the budget of this council. But I would point out, though, that while Labor introduced Living in Brisbane, that they certainly did not introduce the Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme. that they certainly did not introduce the Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme. Now, as councillor Howard correctly pointed out, just shy of $3 million is being spent this financial year on homelessness initiatives.
Councillor Cassidy, please, I'm reluctant to go to the formal notices on this one, but please, please restrain yourself from calling out when another councillor is speaking.
Which is $3 million more than Labor spent on homelessness initiatives. And guess what? We've already announced that we're adding an extra million to help activate a state-led activation of Pinkham Bar in the next budget. And so you can expect a continuation of our support for homelessness initiatives plus an additional $1 million a year. But when you talk about living in Brisbane, it's quite interesting, because depending on when you ask a question, or make a comment, or put up a social media post, living in Brisbane apparently costs anywhere from $1.2 million up to $6 million, depending on which post or claim that Labor has made. So they don't even know what the cost of living in Brisbane is, despite the fact that it's in the budget. They have said in the past that living in Brisbane, they have said in the past, living in Brisbane costs $6 million. Yeah, that is a lie. You're right, you're right. You are correct. That is a lie. It does not cost $6 million. And so, in fact, councillor Cassidy has just confirmed that his previous claims that living in Brisbane costs $6 million are a lie. And in fact, it costs $1.6 million a year. $1.4 million a year, as is highlighted in the budget. But the reality is, when it comes to, when it comes to support for homelessness, we are the only side of politics that has ever done anything in this space. We are the only side of politics that has ever done anything in this space. And while Labor introduced Living in Brisbane, they did not introduce Pathway Out of Homelessness. That was introduced, in fact, in my first year as Lord Mayor.
Oh, councillor Cassidy, please, I've been fairly benign with you today, but I'm asking you to stop and restrain yourself from shouting out across the chamber, please.
And so we'll continue increasing our support for homelessness initiatives among all of the other things that we do to support the boost in housing supply, things that are consistently opposed by Labor councillors and Green councillors. But the reality is, whether Labor claims it's $6 million, or $1.4, or $4 million, or whatever it is they're claiming this time, they introduced Living in Brisbane, but they did not introduce the Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme. Moving forward to the lighting up of council assets as well. And by the way, actually, there's something I neglected to mention, because councillor Massey just said earlier that the statement that I made, or the claim that I made about not supporting development in floodplains, that councillor Massey did not in fact support that position. So what we can take it to mean is councillor Massey is not against development in floodplains. Now, I must apologize for any confusion that has been caused here, because we have had, from your predecessor in November last year, a motion that was put forward by your predecessor and seconded by councillor Johnston, saying Brisbane City Council resolves to start the process of amending city plan and other relevant documents in order to limit all new residential mixed-use industrial and commercial development on land that is mapped under the Brisbane River flood planning areas 1A, 2A, 2B, 3 within the flood overlay.
Councillors, please.
And so, I understand now we have a different position to what has been put forward by your predecessor councillor Massey, and I respect that. I respect that. I think we would welcome a lot of different positions coming forward from that of your predecessor, and this is a good one and a sensible one. And I commend you for not taking the same, I guess, ridiculous approach that your predecessor took when it came to dealing with development in floodplains. Because the reality is, as I've said, a large percentage of Brisbane is built on a floodplain. And if we are suddenly to say no more development on any area that might flood, the implications for housing supply would be diabolical. The implications for the value of people's assets that they have in good faith invested in, in those areas, would be diabolical. The implications and the aim to create new housing supply in Brisbane would be under serious threat, Mr Chair, and so I'm glad that councillor Massey has changed-
Your, Lord Mayor, your time has exposed.
Move an extension. Seconded.
We have an extension of time moved for the Lord Mayor by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Back to the lighting up of assets, Mr Chair. Last night, all of our assets were lit up in the colours of both the Aboriginal and also the Torres Strait Islander flags to recognise National Reconciliation Week. It's a time for us all to come together and to learn about our shared histories, cultures and achievements, and recommit to the process of reconciliation. Tonight, the Sandgate Town Hall and also City Hall will be lit up in red, white and blue to support the Statehood Day of Croatia. This day celebrates the constitution of the first modern multi-party Croatian parliament in 1990. Also tonight, Victoria Bridge, Radcliffe Place, will be lit up in purple to support Darkness to Daylight, the 100 kilometre overnight run. This is Challenge DV's flagship annual fundraising event, and last year they raised an incredible $420,000, and they're aiming to hopefully do even better this year. Thirdly, tonight, the Story Bridge and Tropical Dome will be lit in red to support World MS Day. On this day, around the world, communities raise awareness, share stories and campaign for everyone affected by multiple sclerosis. Tomorrow night, all of our assets will be lit up in maroon. For what, councillor Landers? State of Origin. So, the game, the first game of State of Origin, which strangely is in Adelaide, but it is what it is, I guess. We can all still enjoy it. But we're hoping for a big, a big victory in the first game of the State of Origin. On Thursday, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in blue to support Lifelines Giving Day. The Giving Day raises funds to recruit, train and support volunteers who can help save the lives of Queenslanders needing crisis support. On Friday, we'll be lighting up our assets in teal to support International Myasthenia Gravis Awareness Month, which is an autoimmune condition that affects the transmission of messages between nerves and the muscle fibre. This Saturday is Mabo Day, and we'll be lighting up our assets in the colours of the Torres Strait Islander flag. As you know, Mabo Day is held on the 3rd of June each and every year to commemorate Eddie Mabo and his wonderful contribution when it comes to a success in the High Court of Australia, defeating the concept of terra nullius, which is Latin for land belonging to no one. And so we do commemorate Mabo Day this Saturday with the lighting up of the assets. On Sunday, our assets will be lit up in blue to celebrate the 2023 Brisbane Marathon and the Marathon Festival. Festival is a mass running event, which includes a marathon, a half marathon, 10 kilometre, 5 kilometre and 2 kilometre races. Also, I wanted to briefly mention as well, Better Suburbs Grants, the latest round of which was announced just in recent days. This time, in this particular round, a total of 10 grants have been awarded to local community and sporting groups to help them in their work to build stronger communities. From capital works to planning and designing works, these funds will go a long way to support the committees and the members of Brisbane's clubs. For example, Wilston North Junior Cricket Club will receive $45,000 to install LED lighting for their cricket nets. Saus Rugby Union will be getting $200,000 towards the construction of unisex change rooms, particularly to support the growth in female participation in Rugby Union and in their club in particular. The Wollstone Parks and Tannery Cricket Club will receive $24,000 to install safety lighting and a concrete path to improve safety and accessibility throughout the site. And the Eastern Suburb Soccer Club will be receiving $200,000 for a feasibility study on the potential improvements to Heath Park lease facilities and to allow the club to plan for the future. Item A is the purchase of land at 478 Grieve Road, Rochdale for bushland purposes. This is being done under our bushland acquisition programme. As you can see, this is right in the midst of the Brisbane Koala bushlands in Burbank, Rochdale area, and that is a critical habitat for one of the biggest populations of koalas in South East Queensland, and one that we're committed to boosting and protecting. I do have concerns, though, councillor Huang, that if we keep this up, there will be no residents left in Burbank at all, because we're buying almost every property that comes onto the market in that area. And it is a good thing, though, because it's absolutely critical that we continue to invest in bushland preservation. Item B is the purchase of land located at 50 Evergreen Street, Bracken Ridge, for bushland purposes. This is a slightly different type of bushland, more of a wetlands area, and this land adjoins council's Tinchi Tamba wetlands, and the purchase of this will help consolidate the area in terms of wetland and wildlife habitat. And so it's a home to a diverse range of native wildlife and bird species. And this purchase, like the one just before, will contribute towards our target of having 40% natural habitat cover by 2031. Item C relates to the audit committee meeting minutes, and specifically the audit committee meeting held on the 11th of May 2023. This presented to council in line with the City of Brisbane regulation. Our independent audit committee reviews council's internal audit reports on operational risks and control measures. As the minutes set out, the committee received updates from CEO, CFO, Queensland Audit Office, the chief auditor, the chief information officer, the general manager of human resources, corporate security and ethical standards. The minutes also note that Mr Peter Scott, who is an independent member of the audit committee, will be resigning from his position on 1st of July this year, and we thank him for his important work on this committee and his contribution towards the good governance of the city during his term. Item D, the Financial Risk Management Framework 2023, is something we bring through on an annual basis, or sorry, every two years. Most recently, in 2021, we brought through this document, and we're updating it now. Recommendations from the most recent review to our policy settings have been incorporated into the updated framework for us today. These amendments include additional definitions around carbon risk and the inclusion of a new carbon and environmental risk section, clarification of definitions for liquidity risk and funding risk, and an update of the hedging facilities limit section in accordance with specific treasury approvals granted under the SBFA Act. Some other sections have been removed or amended where they are dealt with in other sections or other policy documents. Overall, these are largely technical amendments in line with the recommendations of specialist advisers. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, you had a point of misrepresentation. Do you want to cover that in your response?
Oh, yeah, if that's okay. I'll just go straight into it. I'll speak on all these items, and my point of misrepresentation was that the figures that the Lord Mayor used, the $6 million figure with the old figures, they have in fact increased the advertising budget so much now that it is millions more. The annual cost of living in Brisbane is now in excess of $1.4 million a year. It used to be less than $1.2 million a year. So the Lord Mayor just admitted, just admitted that he is spending an awful lot more on advertising now, collectively a lot more on advertising than homelessness services every year. When you, when you, when you put in the Brisbane app advertising, when you put in all that other advertising, TV, radio, Brisbane, all that stuff, a lot more is being spent every year on advertising than it is on homelessness services.
Can I now bring you back to the matters before us, please?
So clause A, Chair, the purchase of land located at 478 Grieve Road, Rochdale, and clause B at 50 Evergreen Street, Bracken Ridge, we support these two items. The Rochdale site's almost 20,000 square metres and has already its own environmental management under the city plan, so that makes sense. That's a good purchase. Parcel at Bracken Ridge is almost seven hectares, 6.7 hectares. It's in the rural zone, so was already protected from large-scale development, but it does also, as the Lord Mayor said, sit alongside Tinchi Tamba. So that, of course, does make sense. The Bracken Ridge one's vacant at the moment, and Rochdale just has a single dwelling on it, from my understanding. So those two pieces of land, the purchase price, obviously, though, pales into insignificance when it comes to some other recent bushland acquisitions, particularly that one up on Mount Cravat to protect the deputy mayor from angry residents. Of course, that 6.8 million dollars, I think, kept going up. Over $6.7 million. No, it's all fact, it's all fact, deputy mayor. That's a pretty expensive protection racket, of course. Can you imagine, imagine, Chair, like when we see these legitimate bushland purchases coming through, where the fund isn't being misused for political purposes? You can imagine how much extra bushland could have been purchased using that almost $7 million. You could imagine, you could imagine, Chair, that if councillor Davis, as the responsible chair for this, had have been on the ball and secured that property on Beckett Road, that Koala corridor on Beckett Road for bushland, in the Mountains to Mangroves corridor, we might have had that protected rather than having to fight it out, having to slog it out in the Planning and Environment Court. So of course, where there are legitimate bushland purchases-
Point of order to you, councillor Landers.
None of this is in the report.
Councillor Cassidy, if I can bring you back to the items before us, please.
So we support, again, we support these items because they are genuine purchases. We do support that where it is genuine purchases, where that, where that money is used to secure bushland in critical koala habitat, as is the case down in Burbank at the Rochdale site there, where it is unique habitat to Brisbane, that sort of wetland area adjoining, adjoining council-owned wetlands. But when you, when you look at those figures, the funding that is being used to purchase this land, out of that bushland acquisition levy that is put onto the rates, and that big fund that is managed by council and by councillor Davis, only 18% of that fund is used to purchase new bushland. So we support these items today. We reiterate our calls that more bushland should be bought through this levy. People expect, when they see that levy on their rates, Chair, they expect that that is buying bushland. They don't expect that, what is it, 72%? So, you know, 100 minus 18, 72% of that funding is going on to just normal, everyday, basic programmes that they would expect their rates to be covering. That, that fund was set up to specifically purchase bushland and to preserve it into the future, and of course, again, we support that being done here today, but it is disappointing to see the LMP continue in other instances to politicise that process. Clause C, the audit committee report. Again, we note the minutes, these sort of high-level, very brief minutes, they're about as bad as the minutes that come out of committee meetings in this council. So it seems like there's an awful lot of management and other members, other people in the room, observers, you know, there's a cast of feels like dozens in that room that get the intricate details of all of the things that were discussed. But the people who are responsible for the council, that constitute the council, us in this room, have none of those details. So I think, so there are three members of that committee that showed up to that meeting, and there were, there's about a dozen other observers and other people that came and went throughout that, throughout that meeting. Of course, people need to present at it, but what's the problem with providing councillors with that supporting documentation? I mean, these documents, the documents that are not presented to us, that are given to this committee, detail a lot about the risk management on specific projects within council. They discussed in the past things like invoice fraud, which costs ratepayers hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. They dealt with, they dealt with the aftermath of the LMP's disastrous Tech One contract decision, which cost ratepayers tens of millions of dollars. But all we get is a short summary, and again, we see that today. So we certainly might have more confidence in supporting the record of these meetings if we knew what actually happened at these meetings. It's not, it's not really appropriate that we're endorsing minutes of, of a committee that we weren't part of and have absolutely no detail about what they actually discussed. So to that end, before I continue, Chair, I just ask that item C be taken, serial item for voting, please. And item D, the final item before us today, we do acknowledge that a framework of this nature is important to have in place and note these changes as it's updated. And having read through that framework as well, our team has identified a significant risk that should be included. There's a number of risks that are included there, but something, the single biggest financial risk to the city is the Lord Mayor and his LMP team. So looking through the document in great detail, there are some real red flags, Chair, some serious issues there, and you stop- some serious issues there, and you start, you start right at the top of that document, we've got liquidity risk. So that's the risk that there are insufficient funds available to meet short term financial commitments. The Lord Mayor, obviously, and his finance chair, as we hear week in, week out, councillor Cunningham has the answer for that, just keep increasing rates and borrowing for bad projects. They need to do this, of course, because they can't keep their expenditure in check, Chair. The credit card got maxed out on those inner city projects on the Bendy Bus Metro, that billion dollars in cost overruns is a serious liquidity risk for this council and for ratepayers. The next one down is a foreign exchange risk. Now, that shouldn't be a real problem for council, you wouldn't think, for, for an organisation like ours, but the risk is there, of course, that if there's a change in an exchange rate between Australian dollar and a foreign currency, that'll change the value of that transaction or contract entered into by council. What does that all mean? Well, if the Lord Mayor and the LMP had a willingness and showed some real political leadership and insisted on local manufacturing for the buses, the electric buses for the metro bus project, and they weren't so particular about that bus looking like a tram, even though it was just a bus and being manufactured in a bus building facility in Switzerland, then we wouldn't have been exposed as ratepayers and as council to foreign exchange exposure, trading, trading with a company in Swiss francs. The buses, of course, would also have been made much cheaper and supported local jobs as well if we made them here. Next one down, carbon and environmental risks. Now, that obviously wouldn't be such an issue if this LMP administration weren't spending millions of dollars on carbon credits from overseas, trading in a market that has been exposed as selling dodgy carbon credits, which has led to the logging of old growth forests in our region. So maybe, maybe Chair, if the Lord Mayor and his LMP administration focused on the basics, not taking massive financial risks on inner city projects for their publicity mainly, if he supported manufacturing locally here in Brisbane, supported local jobs and invested in organic recycling and FOGO recycling, then those things would pay a massive dividend, not just for the ratepayers of Brisbane, but would also reduce our risks, the, the risk exposure to ratepayers. Brisbane certainly, if you, if you read through this document, Chair, Brisbane really can't risk another four years of Adrian Truner and his LMP administration.
Thank you. Further speakers. councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item A of the E and C report on the acquisition of 478 Greve Road, Rochdale. Mr Chair, Rochdale and Burbank is a significant part of Brisbane's natural environment, which supports significant native vegetation and maintain valuable ecosystem. The size of property on 478 Greve Road is approximately 19,043 square metres, and is currently zoned environmental management. The very, the very generous owner has wished to donate the land to council to preserve this important parcel of ecologically significant area, which will also support the adjacent Brisbane Koala bushland, but I understand the council have made financial reimbursement for the land. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the previous owner for their generosity and their support to make this significant addition to Brisbane's green coverage. And the Lord Mayor was talking about the, the number of the residents that may lost, you know, if we continue to acquire lands in this area, but can I say, although it will be sad to lose some of these residents, human residents, but we are always welcome the, the koala and other native residents of this land. So I, I would like to commend the report to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers. councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak possibly on all four items, but I'd like to start with A and B. Firstly, with respect to item A at Greve Road, Rochdale, whilst it's commercial in confidence, I note that the owner of this property is essentially undertaking a public service here, and, and in principle donating this land to council, and that's to be commended. So I want to put on the record my thanks to the owner of 478 Greve Road, Rochdale, for his civic minded contribution to preserving and protecting the sustainability of Brisbane. With respect to item B, 50 Evergreen Street, Bracken Ridge, this, this one's a lot more interesting. I, I note the location where it is, adjoining the Tinchy Tambor wetlands area, and I note the Lord Mayor's comments today, that, you know, the Lord Mayor is saying this council's not into erasing green spaces or easing into green spaces with, with building, that he wants to preserve bushland. But my observation is the only place the Lord Mayor wants to preserve bushland is in LMP wards. And we know this because of the history of how the LMP have used the bushland preservation levy, which is ninety-five percent of the funding goes into LMP areas, and only minimal funding is going into other areas. It's noticeable that even the funding that is going into LMP areas like this property today is not on any target acquisition list, and certainly when it came to the properties in Mount Gravat East in councillor Adams Ward, that was done for political purposes. That was three house blocks with a house and a few palm trees on it. So there is a massive double standard when it comes to acquiring green space and bushland in this council, and it is completely politically motivated. When councillor, councillor Griffithson, myself, tried to have some bushland in Oxley bought back, that was in an area of high ecological significance, this LMP administration blocked that motion for months and months, and then refused to support it. Right now, there are, there is a property at risk from development, it's a rural property, councillor Cassidy, so you would think that rural properties are protected. There's supposed to be minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square metres and, you know, certain types of uses that can happen, but there is a, a development application right now to subdivide to the smaller sized block is 600 square metres in an area of high ecological diversity, and part of the site is actually mapped within a Koala corridor in Corinda. But I'd be very surprised to see what happens with the council officers here, because the Lord Mayor's clear that we don't ease development into bushland. This site will see some of the most significant vegetation in Corinda cut down for urban development that does not meet the planning scheme. Now, I've objected, residents have objected, and I am very concerned about why council would even be considering allowing development on land that is zoned as high biological significance and partially mapped within a Koala corridor. And this is land that connects to other bushland and down to the Brisbane River. So whilst I don't have a problem in buying back bushland, I have a problem with the LMP's two face hypocrisy when it comes to protecting bushland. It is prepared to do so in their own areas, but it is not prepared to do so in non-LMP areas, and that is appalling behaviour. Every councillor has an obligation to act in the best interests of the whole city, but the LMP are only interested in governing for themselves, and that is leading to bad outcomes, where we are seeing bushland areas in non-LMP suburbs destroyed by development. Probably this, this part of the site, in this block that's being developed in Corinda, for example, is the part of the site that has trees on it. Pretty much the balance of the block, the eighty percent of the block, no trees on it. It floods, so there's other problems, so that's why they can't build down there, but on the, on the area where the only part of the trees are, that's where they want to cut the trees down. It's, it's, and yet council's considering it. It's clearly going to approve it. Council wrote back, oh, send us, send us an environmental report about the trees, send us this. They're gonna, they're gonna approve it. And if they do, it's going to make a mockery of the Lord Mayor's comments, that I quote, Brisbane City Council is not easing into green areas. We've heard him here today, we've heard him here today, that the reason that they're going up in South Brisbane is to protect green areas, green areas, but that's not the case. That is, the Lord Mayor is saying one thing and doing another. And out here, it's almost identical. This is a, a site at Bracken Ridge that is zoned rural, and it is disappointing to me to see that, that this LMP administration is prepared not only to protect this land that's zoned rural, but is prepared to buy it back. Whereas if you go to the other side of the city in Corinda, this administration won't buy land back, and they will not protect it under the planning scheme, which is there to protect land like this. It just shows the double standards under this LMP administration. It demonstrates why you cannot believe a word they say. It demonstrates very clearly that what the Lord Mayor says about protecting green space and going up in the inner city is fundamentally untrue, absolutely untrue. You cannot trust a single word this man says. It is not, it's not believable because of what they actually do in practice. So just with respect to the Financial Risk Management Framework, I won't be supporting that. I don't know where we're up to in terms of seri item, but I'd like that taken seri item for voting purposes. That's item D, and you just can't trust them. I mean, I, there's so many new councillors now they don't remember, but probably about six or seven years ago now, we had that debate where the Lord Mayor's debt, debt policy changed, and $500 million, half a billion dollars was put in the bottom drawer, never to be touched. So no plan to pay it down, no plan to do anything. And we know under this administration debt is simply going up, they're investing in bad projects that are being run badly, and that is costing the city money, and we are not seeing the investment going into the parts of the city that is needed. And the fact that, you know, they're tinkering around with the Financial Risk Management Framework, you cannot trust what the Lord Mayor said here, that these are administrative changes. The Lord Mayor says this all the time, and then later you find out that there've been very significant changes that have been dressed up, and because there's no briefing for councillors, there's no advice for councillors, there's no explanation for councillors, you know, you just can't believe what the Lord Mayor says, they cannot be trusted, so I won't be voting for it.
Point of order to you councillor Lambs. Oh, are you the rising speaker?
I'm the rising speaker. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers, it's okay.
It's same, same though, because it is disappointing that councillor Fortenison is not supportive of the Tinchy Tambor wetlands. It isn't just because-
Point of order. Point of order. Claimed to be misrepresented.
I know. Thank you, Chair.
You can't believe what they said.
The councillor Fortenison said that it's only because it's in an LMP area. Unfortunately, there are nineteen LMP areas in the city, so a lot of, you know, there's a lot of-
Sorry, it's not for the majority, Johnstone.
So, of course, you know, it, there are a lot of things going on in, in Brisbane, but there's a reason why councillor Cassidy is supportive of this, and that's because Tinchy Tambor wetlands is actually within Deegan and Bracken Ridge ward, and forms a very large and important part of the city of Brisbane, as does Boondore Wetlands. So, you know, I hope that she does support it.
Can you refer to councillors by their proper names, please?
Sorry, Chair, I hope that councillor Fortenison supports it.
Okay. councillor Johnston, your point of misrepresentation.
Of misrepresentation.
You claim misrepresentation?
Yes, yes, it is not, not, not difference.
I said misrepresentation.
Misrepresentation. Thank you. That's not what it sounded like.
Shall I say it again to you councillor Johnston? Your point of misrepresentation, you may now call it.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. That would be great. I was misrepresented by councillor Sandy Landers. As I stood up, I said I wasn't opposed to the acquisition of bushland in this location, but what I, where I was misrepresented is that I am concerned that they do not fund the purchase of bushland in non-LMP wards.
Further speakers. councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, excuse me, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on items A and B, which are the purchases under the Bushland Acquisition Programme. And as you know, Mr Chair, Brisbane prides itself very much on being Australia's greenest and most biodiverse capital city, and this is achieved through integrating a sustainability focus across all of council's work areas, but through the Bushland Acquisition Programme, we are taking direct steps to protect, preserve and conserve Brisbane's natural estate. And it's disappointing, Mr Chair, that the leader of the opposition once again has stood up and misrepresented what the Bushland Preservation Levy supports. Whilst it does support the purchase of land through the Bushland Acquisition Programme, it also supports a range of other initiatives that are very, very important in our quest remain Brisbane's, the, the country's most green capital city and the most biodiverse capital city. So under the Bushland Preservation Levy, as I said, it involves the purchase of bushland through the Bushland Acquisition Programme, but we're also paying back that accelerated programme that brought us to a, a wonderful figure of around 750 hectares of, of bushland. We've got the Brisbane Invasive Species Management Programme, we've got the Wipeout Weeds Programme, and councillor Cassidy on occasion comes into this chamber and has a bit of a crack about that, councillor Marks, and our management of weeds. Well, we cover that, councillor Cassidy, through the Bushland Preservation Levy. It also supports these very important community partnerships, the Community Conservation Partnership, the Community Conservation Assistance Programme, and the Conservation Reserves Management Programme. And it also, councillor Johnston, puts around a million dollars each, each year into the Oxley Creek Transformation Project. And frankly, Mr Chair, having councillor Cassidy come here and start to outline what we are not doing well in the EPS portfolio, when just two weeks ago, he chose to remove himself from my committee, so it really does show just how interested councillor Cassidy is in really identifying the issues that we are challenged with in our city with regards to maintaining our bushland reserves and acquiring new bushlands. He is simply in it for the politics. With regards to the Risk Management Framework, these are minor, and I say minor, technical changes that acknowledge the risks with buying certain kinds of offsets, which are exactly the ones that we don't purchase, exactly the ones that we don't purchase under CS6, which is our offset purchasing policy. The framework still approves the use of both domestic and international offsets. It's interesting, Mr Chair, that the federal government are encouraging both the purchase of local and international offsets, but their council colleagues seem to have a bit of a problem with it. But back to items A and B, you'll recall, Mr Chair, that the Lord Mayor recently announced the acquisition of council's 400th parcel of land through this programme, which is a very significant milestone, but it was by no means our last, and today before us, we have two additional acquisitions to consider. Our track record of protecting bushland in this city is very strong and is key to our ongoing commitment to Brisbane remaining Australia's most biodiverse capital city. Item A is the purchase of a property at 478 Greve Road at Rochdale, and as the Lord Mayor mentioned, or he might not have mentioned this, this property has been a part of the Wildlife Conservation Partnerships Programme for a number of years, in fact, since 2007, and it's just one of the examples of the great collaborations between council and private landowners working together to achieve really wonderful environmental outcomes. The ecosystem on this property is recognised as being of citywide significance, it supports significant native vegetation, and there is evidence that koalas have been present on the property as it's situated, as both councillor Huang and the Lord Mayor mentioned, near the Brisbane Koala bushland, which supports a significant koala population. As the Lord Mayor may have mentioned, unfortunately, the owner has recently become a little unwell and can no longer live in his property, but I understand that the property owner has for a very long time wished to have this land dedicated for conservation purposes so that it could be preserved in perpetuity. And so to support that wish, the family contacted council on his behalf to offer that property for conservation purposes, very generously, at no cost. However, you know, with such a generous offer, it was appropriate that we approached the family with an offer to cover the legal costs associated with the property sale, and that is in the amount of-
The family did accept that offer, we're very pleased about that, and once the sale proceeds, works will be scheduled to remove the existing house and structures.
Item B is the purchase of land at 50 Evergreen Street, Bracken Ridge, once again for bushland purposes. The acquisition will consolidate a large area of valuable wetland ecosystems that provide important habitat for a diversity of native wildlife species. Council has been in discussion with the owner of this property for a number of years now, and we have now reached an agreed price for the land, and that has been supported by an independent valuation. As both the Lord Mayor and councillor Lander said, the land adjoins council's Bald Hills Creek Park and Tinchy Tambor wetlands, so it makes a logical and valuable- Creek Park and Tinchi Tambor Wetlands, so it makes a logical and valuable addition to these existing reserves. The vegetation in the area includes an intricate mosaic of dry eucalypt woodlands, casual arena forest and paperback swamp. Tinchi Tambor Wetlands also adjoins the Moreton Bay Marine Park, which is listed as a wetland of international importance, and the wetlands include large areas of mangroves and salt marsh, which not only provides habitat for a variety of native wildlife species, it also supports the overall health of Moreton Bay. So, Mr. Chair, these properties are very welcome additions to our bushland acquisition programme and our bushland estate, and I commend these submissions to the chamber.
Thank you.
Point of order, Chair. Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion moved by councillor Lander and seconded by councillor Hutton that we adjourn for an afternoon tea break. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any further speakers? Just to remind everybody where we are, we're up to E and C. I see no one rising to their feet. Lord Mayor is not here to sum up. So, for voting purposes, we are putting A and B together. So, all those in favour of A and B of the report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. The ayes have it. C and D are Seri Adam, so I'll now put item C of the report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, ayes to my left. Please ring the bells.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and five against.
It has passed. Councillors, please return, please return to your seats. We'll now put item D of the report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. I move the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of May, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 and Paralympic Games Committee dated Tuesday, the 23rd of May, 2023, be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before I go to the report from last week, business hub workshops and mentoring programmes have been going strong in the last week. I had the great pleasure of being on the panel last Thursday morning for the Women in Business Big Day Out, which was a wonderful networking event for our small business women who love their networking, who have, some of them have had the opportunity for the Women's in Grants Programme, but others are just coming out to network and learn from leaders in business about how to support themselves going forward in their business as well. So, some of the feedback, thank you so much for offering this. It helps business feel less lonely and helps us not to keep reinventing the wheel. We can learn from others who have done this. Opportunities like this help us grow our skill sets in business and make meaningful connections with other women, and it's held in a wonderful venue too. And that's exactly what the networking event's about, for particularly our micro to small businesses, to make sure they feel less lonely in this space, and they can spend time not reinventing the wheel, learn and connect and make sure that we support them to go on to being small to medium to maybe one-day large enterprises as well. And in that vein, what is on this week for those small to medium enterprises? On the first of June at 12:30, we've got Pitch Like a Pro, an interactive workshop to share some of the tools and tactics the advertising world applies to get buy-in from people that matter most, and that's by Pitch Camp. On the sixth of June, we have at 9:30am, The Habits of Highly Effective Salespeople. It's a workshop providing insights and specifics in how to improve your closing ratio. So, it's for attendees to discuss tips and tricks across the sales cycle from H Consulting. And our third one this week on the sixth, also at one o'clock, is Comfortable, Confident and Credible on Camera, fundamentals of maximising the on-screen space and potential business opportunities that flow from online communication media, and that's by Arts Media Consultants. So, quite a bit of a variety of workshops this week for our small businesses, so hopefully councillors are sharing that with their, excuse me, sharing that with their businesses in their suburbs as well. And most of those are also online. There's many times that those networks are online, so if people can't get into town, or they're filmed so they can be watched later, please share them with your communities. Last week, we had another programme, supporting our economic development in the Maker Entrepreneurship Programme. So, this really is about micro businesses in most cases. A maker is defined as someone who creates a tangible item, either by design or fabrication, such as an artist, sewer printer, potter, metalsmith, jeweller, woodworker or designer. So, last year, we had just fifteen participants in one workshop, but this year, we were able to make sure we got a variety of attendance options, which allowed us to make it a much larger cohort, and we had three cohorts of fifteen, so we had forty-five participants who are at the moment midway through their programme for this year. So, there's weekday sessions held at the suburban business hub and weekend sessions held, and evening sessions held to make sure that everybody can either attend in person, and there's the online versions with that as well, focusing on business goals and planning, managing money, photography and styling, marketing strategy and bringing it all together. We know that makers are fantastic creatives, but when it comes down to it, sometimes they need support with the actual running of the business. This is a fantastic programme, and I recommend the report to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising to their feet. I'll now put the report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, the ayes have it. To the next item on the agenda, councillor Murphy, Transport Committee.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I move the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of May, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated the 23rd of May, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Last week, members of the Transport Committee were given a presentation on the current works of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge's active transport connections. We know that the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will provide a faster, safer and more convenient access for residents via its landings in the city and at Kangaroo Point, which will result in an estimated reduction in eighty-four thousand fewer car trips each and every year. The landings provide connections to Citylink Cycleway, the City Botanic Gardens, Riverwalk and City White Park in Kangaroo Point. The main focus of the presentation, Mr. Chair, was the new dedicated walking and riding connections that will happen between Main Street and Deacon Street. Construction began in 2022 alongside the realignment of Deacon Street to make way for a new pedestrian path and a two-way off-road bike path, and this part of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge project is being managed by council, separate from the main bridge construction works and contract, which is being carried out by Connect Brisbane. This path will form a new separated pedestrian and bike path between Main Street and Deacon Streets, as well as a raised priority crossing from Scott Street Bridge across to Main Street. The raised priority crossing on Main Street will give priority to pedestrians, bicyclists and immobility riders with give-way signage for vehicles. This will be a wombat-style crossing, deputy chair, a raised crossing where cars will need to give priority to pedestrians, and this will give us a safe, continuous and accessible link between the bridge and Deacon Street that complements the existing shared path network within Kangaroo Point. As some of the chamber may have seen, these paths will connect in with a brand-new underpass by the existing council depot beneath the Story Bridge. Unfortunately, you won't be able to see any progress from the street at the moment as dust and noise portals are in place across both sides of the underpass to prevent any reverse amenity for the residents of Kangaroo Point and to also prevent any unwanted intrusions during construction. Work in the underpass has commenced with the concrete sidewalls and the depot cut open to make way for new pedestrian paths and two-way bike paths. The surface of the existing floor has been removed. During this process, we'll also be installing drainage and will be relocating a water main onto Deacon Street. With more than two tonnes of concrete that have been removed so far has been taken to a treatment plan. Council's contracted committing to recycling ninety-five per cent of these materials for use in other construction projects that council has undertaken, work such as drainage backfill retaining walls and landscaping. So, good news for our circular economy. Deputy Chair. The underpass will, of course, improve travel times across the board by providing a direct route from Deacon Street and the eastern suburbs to the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe councillor Matthew, who's not on the chair at the moment, will be pleased to learn that walking from the Gavitt to the CBD will save twenty-nine minutes walking and then seven minutes riding, so some big travel time savings for her residents. East Brisbane residents will also save fifteen minutes if walking, four minutes if riding, if they're travelling to Eagle Street Pier. Of course, developed in consultation with specialists, this new underpass feature will have illustrative wall panels which will depict the story, the history of the Story Bridge, and multiple seating areas that will be engraved with historical quotes relating to the bridge's history. This, of course, will engage users in acknowledging and appreciating the history of the Story Bridge as an iconic structure within the city, and I believe will be the single greatest focal point of history depicting the history of the Story Bridge that council has constructed to date. Of course, the Story Bridge being the shortest highway in the country, the Bradfield Highway, and a very important part of connecting our city north to south. This walking and cycling connection underneath the Story Bridge will also be a high-quality alternative to the existing Thornton Street Underpass, which is not DDA compliant and is known historically for its antisocial behaviour. So, this connection will be completed in the first half of 2024, and it will be done prior to the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge opening. Both connections will ensure that Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will provide faster, safer and more convenient access to citywide walking, bike-riding and immobility networks, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on this item, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge Ongoing Connections, and speak in support of this project, the broader ongoing connections through Kangaroo Point through to other major drivers of destination is really important. It's something we've argued for as a part of the Kangaroo Point Bridge project for some time now, and glad we're finally seeing some action being taken on that. We do certainly support that project. I couldn't possibly say it eloquently perhaps as somebody else, so I'll just, I'll read what another councillor, the infrastructure chair nonetheless, councillor Andrew Wines, had to say about this project recently, and I quote, "Opening up under the Story Bridge for recreational biking, the bikeway extension that being built through under the Story Bridge as part of the extension of the Kangaroo Point Bridge, making another great in Brisbane recreation for all Brisbane people." I do think he's missed the point a bit. It was hard to read a few times, but I do think he missed the point. This is the infrastructure chair of council, deputy chair, is saying that this project's all about recreation, and I think people certainly took issue with that, because this is an important transport connection. This, according to councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor, is about getting cars off the road, and then to have the infrastructure chair say, well, no, this is in fact about recreational biking, not about commuting, is a bit confusing, I think, when you've got, you know, two LNP councillors sitting two seats away from each other and they can't get their story straight about what this project is all about. You know, people who engaged with what councillor Wines put out there as best they could, I guess, it was a bit hard to decipher what he meant. Paul said, uninformed as usual. Keith said, you need to have your PR people, whoever write this stuff, if you read some of your council policy documents. You could really tick a whole bunch more boxes and have them use keywords and phrases like active transport rather than just about recreation, of course. Why brand it as recreation when it will critically contribute to the safety of commuters simply trying to get from A to B and back again to their families? BCC is responsible and negligent for safety of active transport users being injured and killed on its local roads. Another one, recreation. Man, you need to go and see what the bikeways are like at rush hour. These paths are required for thousands of workers and uni students to commute on daily, and the sooner you take active transport seriously, the better. Another one, this is not for recreation, although some people might also use it on recreational rides, it will make riding to work safer and more efficient for people, in this case, in the eastern suburbs of Brisbane. And another one, this isn't for recreation. So, I think there is a point there. Do support councillor Murphy in bringing this presentation and what is included in this presentation. We do support those active transport connections beyond the Kangaroo Point Bridge, because they are important transport corridors, important transport corridors of the future, and they'll be critical transport corridors for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, but obviously councillor Wines doesn't agree with that, and I certainly hope he gets up today and corrects the record about that. And I will table this document, I can table this one not be in breach of the code of conduct, of course, by tabling budgeting confidence material, but I will table this so it's on the record.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just have to respond to councillor Cassidy's gratuitous attack on cycleways. Look, people are allowed to have fun when they ride bikes, but not in councillor Cassidy's land. Apparently, every time you ride a bike, it is a very serious experience, and no fun is to occur on any bikeways in the city. What a ridiculous thing for him to say, that you go down to inordinate bikeways across this city.
Just one moment, please, councillor. Councillor Collier, the chamber gave councillor Cassidy the respect to hear him in silence. Can the favour please be returned? Thank you. Please, basically what I'm asking is, don't call out across the chamber. Councillor Wines, you got the call.
I expect councillor Collier to go down to the boardwalk at the end of Oxford Street and stop any small children on tricycles and explain to them that this is not a place to have fun, because that's the nature of heroin dejections. What a ludicrous point. What a ludicrous point that was being made by the opposition leader, that people can't enjoy themselves cycling. I mean, it is a ludicrous position to take. And you know what? I would contend to the people who provide their opinion to me that I think people will enjoy themselves cycling across the Green Bridge, and I think people will enjoy themselves cycling under the Story Bridge. People are welcome to cycle in the city the way they choose, not the way the bicycle user groups demand people cycle, or the way that Labor Council does demand people cycle. So, if people would like to use our billion dollars' worth of road infrastructure that's been built while I've been on, part of the majority in council here, they are welcome to enjoy themselves. They are also welcome to go where they wish, when they wish, as a cyclist, and I think that that's important. So, once again, we see councillor Cassidy literally being the fun police, the fun police. So, I hope that nobody tonight intends on recreationally cycling on Sandgate waterfront. I hope that nobody intends to cycle for enjoyment along the Oxford Street reaches of Brisbane River, because their councillors will shun them and poo-poo them, and it's not certainly something that I would agree with, and I hope that people, when this infrastructure's built, really enjoy them.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Are there any further speakers? I see none rising. Councillor Murphy, write a reply.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chair. Look, I thank both councillors, councillor Cassidy, councillor Wines, for their contribution to that debate. Look, I personally, I, no, look, I think councillor Wines, to your point, that there's a role for both commuter cyclists and recreational cyclists to play in setting policy and the future direction of capital works in this city, but I think the point that you're perhaps getting at, maybe subtly in that post, councillor Wines, was that often recreational cyclists who are, I would argue, in this city, the vast majority of cyclists out there are often the silent majority, and they don't form user groups, they don't, you know, sit around the table, they don't lobby anyone, but they...
but they get out there on the weekend with their families and they go out there and they have a lot of fun. They often don't have a seat at the table, but it is important that we deliver infrastructure for them, just as it is we deliver important infrastructure like the Kangaroo Point Greenbridge, which is, as you've mentioned, a hundred and ninety million dollar investment, a very important investment in solving a transport problem in our city that has been existing since the late eighteen hundreds. So, this is, it is this administration will get on and build that critical link. And I'm sure councillor Wines, when we open that bridge next year, particularly on day number one, there'll be far more recreational users out to check it out than there will be commuters. So, yeah, I'm sure you'll be there and I'll be looking for councillor Cassidy as well. But I will just make, I'll just make the serious, I'll just make the serious point...
Councillors, please let councillor Murphy speak.
I'll just make the serious point, Deputy Chair, that when Labour were last in office, they spent five million dollars annually on recreational and commuter cycling in this city. This year, we'll spend two hundred and seven million dollars on recreational and commuter cycling, so forty-one times what they spent when they were in office. So our record stands for itself. We have the runs on the board when it comes to all types of cycling infrastructure in this city.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee, please.
All right. All right, Mr. Chair, I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-third of May, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
I'm gonna call councillor Landers on that one. She was a bit quicker than you, councillor Huang. It's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-third of May, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Wines, you have the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as is typical, the content of my reports to this place are very good, demanding the enthusiastic and keenness of my colleagues to second the report to be part of what is always really informative and excellent proposals and presentations put forward by our officers this week in recognition of Road Safety Week, which of course was the week before this presentation. We had a review of all the items that we do to make sure that this city is a safe place to move around. And so, safety is at the core of everything we do in Brisbane infrastructure. And so I just wanted to take that whole meeting to reflect upon that. Now, two core areas of safety, safety for road users and of course, safety for road workers. And of course, the spirit of Road Safety Week is of course, drive so others survive. So typically, we'd have hundreds of workers out on our roads doing construction maintenance, surveying and these types of activities and their safety must also be considered as part of what would be the asset lifecycle. We must consider how someone would build or maintain, operate or demolish, dismantle or dispose of a road asset in all parts of the asset's life. The TPO branchals has a number of programmes separate to that that reflect how we can make motoring safer. So the number of programme areas or project areas within the programme include the Local Network Priority Improvements Programme and it has six categories. The local area network, local access network improvements, local area traffic management, which we commonly call traffic calming, suburban corridor modernisation, safe school travel infrastructure, traffic management plan improvements and road construction minor traffic density, which hopefully most councillors understand what's the different distinctions between all of those projects are. And if not, you'll learn about them in the budget and feel free to ask me in our information sessions at that time. Projects delivered within the LMPIP enhance access and safety in our suburbs and near schools through installations of treatments such as traffic management schemes such as traffic calming, which sees a typical twenty per cent reduction in the risk of crashes, which, and these devices included in a LATM, speed platforms, slow points, pedestrian crossings, chicanes and humpabouts or roundabouts. The presenter provided a number of statistics about the success of these types of treatments, which show that pedestrian refuges see a typical reduction in the risk of crashes of fifteen to thirty per cent. Curb build-outs reduce the risk of motor vehicle crashes typically by thirty-five per cent. Improved lighting, both new and upgraded, will reduce the likelihood of crashes somewhere between twenty and fifty per cent. Humpabouts typically reduce the risk of crashes by more than fifty-five per cent. Splitter islands typically reduce the risk of crashes by roughly forty per cent. Visibility improvements typically reduce the risk of crashes by thirty per cent. And these types of infrastructure treatments can help reduce the risk of crashes by more than half, ensuring that we get people home sooner and safer. In the twenty-two, twenty-three financial year, eight point eight million dollars in funding was invested through this area to be able to make sure that our road network is safer. As of May, twenty twenty-three, projects have been completed in eighteen locations with another fifteen anticipated to be completed by the end of twenty-two, twenty-three financial year. Transport and planning operations also install LED road signage to increase visibility of different road elements to make sure that drivers anticipate them properly. These include school zones, wildlife zones, speed limits such as SAMs, areas that flood or the automated flood warning sign and pedestrian crossings. To further improve safety for pedestrians, we also install pedestrian countdown timers, typically in high pedestrian areas. And we also have altered traffic signals to provide greater pedestrian protection, including hold-on red for motor vehicles. So I'm sure many of us have experienced that one, where as a motorist you are held from turning left into a road until the conclusion of the green man walk signal. Other traffic safety initiatives include road signage, pavement markings, speed limit reviews, school traffic management plans, as well as safe school travel infrastructure. And then of course, from today's presentation, which we'll see again next week, the BMTMC and the Traffic Management Centre, as well as improving our bike work network for both transportational and recreational use. I commend the work that TPO does and I look forward to contributions from my colleagues.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Are there any further speakers on the report? I see none standing. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, sorry, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-third of May, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-third of May, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A was a committee presentation for the Lumley Street Village Precinct project in Upper Mount Gravat. The Lumley Street Village Precinct project was launched in January, twenty twenty-two and successfully completed in May, twenty twenty-three. Throughout the project, the local community actively participated, providing valuable input during the initiation and planning phases. Working in collaboration with the community, council has transformed the area into an attractive, comfortable and connected centre that benefits both locals and visitors. The project has delivered a range of improvements aimed at enhancing accessibility, maintenance, amenity and visual appeal. Delivered improvements include upgraded footpaths with the installation of new tactile ground surface indicators, improved accessibility and overall pedestrian experience, on-street accessible parking bays with curb ramps and an upgraded Telstra phone booth, new seating areas and the installation of custom and standard council street furniture, including bench seats, bins and bike racks, enhancing comfort and functionality. Additional street trees and garden beds were planted, contributing to improved visual and physical amenity while addressing the urban heat island effect. To celebrate the completion of the project, Brisbane City Council organised the Fall in Love with Lumley activation event on the twentieth of May. This event was a great success, attracting approximately three hundred attendees who enjoyed live music, face painting games and a photo booth. The inclusion of a gelato van added to the festive atmosphere while the interactive native animal display from Wild Encounters provided an educational and unique experience for visitors. The community's active engagement and interest in the project were demonstrated by the high attendance at the activation event. Additionally, council received positive online feedback from community members expressing their gratitude for the excellent outcome and their satisfaction with the project's management and execution. In conclusion, I think you can agree, the Lumley Street Village Precinct project was successfully, has successfully revitalised the area and is another example of how the Shruna Council is committed to maintaining our city's lifestyle, ensuring Brisbane gets even better. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Huang?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item A of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report on the Lumley Street Village Precinct project. Mr. Deputy Chair, the village precinct project is designed to deliver a beautification of local shopping villages to make it more attractive, leading to increased customer patronage and activity for our local businesses. I would like to thank the lawman for his commitment and support to deliver this project in McGregor Ward. I remember a number of years ago, I spoke about the challenges facing smaller shopping precincts to compete with major shopping centres such as Garland City and the diminishing character in our local shopping precincts. The Lumley Street shops have endured many challenges, but the additional upgrades definitely make this precinct more attractive and I'm sure it will bring more patronage to support smaller shopping centres like the Lumley Street Village. As the local councillor, I'm proud to be a member of the Shruna Council, which is the most small business friendly in history and is making significant investments to improve our suburbs. I commend the item to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Huang. Councillor Johnson?
Yes, I rise to speak on item A, the Lumley Street Upper Mount Gravat Village Precinct project. It's fascinating, I think, that since two thousand and eighteen, the VPP programme has delivered eighteen programmes, eighteen projects around the city, none of which has been in Tennyson Ward. This project was one of those sleight of hands in the budget where it was changed from a skip, a suburban centre improvement project, where we'd been asking for a skip in my ward for Annelie and for Graceville since I started. It was a, it's a promise since two thousand and seven when I started campaigning. And then the LMP changed the framework and the goalposts and basically then said, "No, we're doing village precinct projects, they're not skips." And they funded Aspli, from memory, Anala, there were three, there was another one, I think. So two LMP, one Labour.
Dara.
Dara? Yeah, okay. Anyway, so most of us did petitions. I remember councillor Cook did a petition, I did the two petitions for the two areas I've been waiting on and we were told at that time that, yes, you know, Annelie would be on the list. Here we are, five years later, six years later, still not being considered. Instead, what we're seeing is the projects being delivered in LMP wards. So, so far, this year, two projects, Camp Hill Cooperoo, LMP, and Upper Mount Gravat, LMP. Next year, it's going to be Rosalie, marginal LMP, possibly green, and then Mansfield, which is also LMP. This programme is being abused by the LMP to fund projects in their own areas. And the planning chairperson might hop up and explain his public announcement during the week about how Banyo was selected to be part of the Growing Precincts Together programme. I've never heard of it. There was never an offer for communities to nominate to be part of this programme, to my knowledge. And if there's two programmes...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Councillor for Tennyson is talking about something in my portfolio, relevance to the committee presentation before us.
Councillor Johnson, would you remind returning to the report, please?
Yeah, yeah. And this is about activating, I mean, this is about activating community retail and commercial areas. So I guess the issue touches close to home, doesn't it? If the funding for these programmes is only being considered for LMP areas and it's not just in this VPP programme, it's in this other one now that I've never heard of before called Growing Precincts Together. So I think that there is a real problem with the way in which the LMP are administering the funds for Brisbane. I've been saying this for many years. Wards like Tennyson Ward just miss out altogether. We just don't get anything. And it's even fascinating how councillor Allen stood up and said how wonderful the party was, how wonderful the party was for, it's got a name, Fall in Love with Lumley event. So when the Graceville Honour Avenue precinct got a skip about eight years ago, council didn't have an event, did not have an event, didn't spend any money on a party despite promising the shop owners there that there would be a big activation event, that they would be having a party, that council would fund reactivation of the precinct. Graceville got nothing, zero dollars. So it's fascinating, no, it is, isn't it? So it's fascinating to see and hear how wonderfully the Fall in Love with Lumley event in an LMP ward was funded. So the big problem we've got here is the LMP do and say one thing for their own political purposes in their own ward and they do not do the same investment in non-LMP wards and particularly my ward. And I think it is appalling that suburbs like Annelie are being neglected. The Annelie Junction Shopping Precinct has been on the list for a skip for fifteen years and then it's been on the list for a VPP for five years. It is outrageous that one of the biggest suburbs in Brisbane is so neglected by the LMP that, you know, the footpath on one side of the road is crumbling. It is just outrageous that Rosalie is getting more investment from this administration. It will not save that ward. It will not save that ward. It is gone for all money. And it's just ridiculous that the LMP continue to invest in their own areas for their own political purposes, rather than doing the right thing and making sure that funding is going into parts of the city that are desperately in need of an upgrade like Annelie, which have been neglected for years and years and years. The footpaths in Annelie are the oldest in the city, they are dangerous. And whilst a small portion of them was fixed on the eastern side of Ipswich Road, for the two minutes it was in an LMP area, the footpaths have not been fixed. I just note the whole way through my speech, the deputy mayor has been talking and trying to interrupt me and trying to put me off, engaging in behaviour that she's been doing all day...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Deputy Mayor, point of order.
I just ask if you could bring the councillor back to the Lumley VPP.
Certainly will.
It's not about her, surprise, surprise.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Certainly will. Councillor Johnson, can I remind you...
Chair, point of order.
Just one moment, can I deal with one point of order at a time, please? Councillor Johnson, can I remind, just bring you back to the report, please. Councillor Collier, your point of order.
Councillors should be referred to by their correct title, not she.
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening that closely, I apologise. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call.
Chair, point of order.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Do you uphold my point of order that councillors should be referred to by their correct titles?
I agree with your assessment, but I did not hear what the deputy mayor said because I was looking in the direction of councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call.
I note you didn't address councillor Adams' behaviour, which has been continuing throughout my speech, but...
Just, can I address that? I was just about to pull up the deputy mayor...
No, you didn't.
Can I finish? Councillor Johnson, you full well know that when the chair is speaking, no matter who it is in this place, in this chair, that you be quiet. Now, before, just as the deputy mayor was about to stand, I was going to address her, but she called a point of order, which you full know that I have to address the point of order first. You full know, which I did. Now, I'm giving you back the call, you have the call.
Thank you. And I just say, Mr. Deputy Chairman, that it is your responsibility to make sure that councillors in this place, not just me, abide by the standards of behaviour. Now councillor Adams was clearly being disruptive there and you didn't address it.
Thank you, councillor Johnson, you have the call.
Yes, I do, thank you so much. And I'm referring to paragraph two, which is talking about the number of projects, eighteen projects that have been implemented since this scheme was introduced and the fact that some areas in this suburb, in this city have been deliberately neglected by the LMP for their own purposes. And that is to fund projects where it politically suits them, rather than doing the right thing and investing in older suburbs that are in desperate need of upgrades like Annelie. And it is shocking to see that areas are getting new footpaths in Upper Mount Gravat or Rosalie, where they're in pretty good condition to start with, and then you go to a place like Annelie where the footpaths are in appalling condition. So my point here is that the LMP administration, like so many of the programmes that I speak about, are only interested in funding projects in their own ward and they are not interested in doing the right thing and funding the necessary projects that are needed right across this city. and they are not interested in doing the right thing and funding the necessary projects that are needed right across this city. And that is appalling behaviour. It reflects badly on them and it will not save them. It will not save them.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising. Councillor Allen, write a reply.
Mr Chair, look, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Councillor Johnston mentioned a couple of village precinct projects that are current, but effectively skipped around the fact that we've got one live in Boondore. So there is a project up in Boondore. I'd also remind the councillor that, you know, at the end of the day, a very significant number of the wards are LMP wards. And accordingly, you'll see a lot of projects out in those wards because they represent a large portion of the city. Now, in terms of the the Graceville skip, councillor Howard was at the party for that skip. So this sort of notion that it doesn't doesn't happen anywhere else is not true. And just to add to the-
Just my moment, please, councillor. Councillor Johnson, please.
And then councillor-
Councillor Johnson, please. Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
It's worth bearing in mind that councillor Huang contributed a hundred thousand dollars of his SEF money to the Lumley Street Village Precinct project. So there's a local councillor who was committed to his project and was committed to make the project as good as it could be. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Allen. We will now put the report. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, twenty third of May, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty third of May, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Last week's committee presentation was on council's weed identification tool, which is part of our suite of online tools and resources to assist residents with living cleaner, greener and more sustainably. Deputy Chair, as I said earlier, we take great pride in being Australia's most biodiverse capital city. But just as there are thousands of species of flora and fauna which enrich our city's landscape, there are also hundreds of species of weeds which are not so desirable. The Weed Identification Tool was developed in two thousand and thirteen and has been well received, not only here in Brisbane, but also from landowners outside of Brisbane. There are over three, there are three hundred and fifty-nine weed species listed in Brisbane's biosecurity plan, which can be identified using the Weed ID Tool. And while it was originally designed to be used on a desktop computer, the Weed ID Tool has been adapted for use on tablets and mobile devices via an app, meaning you can check weeds against our list in real time when you are out in your garden. When using the tool to identify a suspected weed, residents can browse through a number of botanical features, including leaf arrangement, leaf form, flower colour and foliage colour to ensure identification is as accurate as possible. But despite its name, the Weed ID Tool does so much more than identify weed species. It also provides users with helpful information about the management and removal of weeds, as well as the different methods which are best for each species. These tips and tricks include information on herbicide application, stem scraping, basil bark treatment and stump cutting, to name just a few. Because ensuring that we manage weeds the right way is critical to protecting both the surrounding environment and the health and safety of our community. And importantly, for landowners, when a biosecurity risk is identified through the tool, it provides information on complying with biosecurity obligations under both state and local laws. Mr Chair, we also had three petitions. Firstly, a petition requesting council prioritise the upgrade of stormwater drainage between Yorongah Memorial Park, Yorongah, and Mullabin Creek, Yorongpili. And we also had two petitions on leaf blowers, one requesting council prohibit the use of petrol leaf blowers on weekends and another petition requesting council provide incentives for rate payers to switch to electric leaf blowers and ban the ban the use of petrol leaf blowers. With that, I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item B, the petition regarding council funding for the stormwater upgrade for Yorongah Memorial Park through to Mullabin Creek in Yorongpili. I want to start by saying a thank you to the residents who raised these localised flooding issues with me. This is not related to major river floods. This is a localised stormwater problem that's been occurring for several years because of the inadequate and deficient drainage in Yorongpili. Council has identified that there is a a major problem with the stormwater capacity. And it has also identified some faults with the construction of the stormwater in this network through Yorongpili. The big problem, of course, is that the administration spends a drop in the bucket on stormwater compared to what is needed in the city. I would have dozens and dozens of stormwater projects that are awaiting funding through the council budget. We know that less than forty million dollars out of a four billion dollar budget is spent on stormwater management. And this year, the LMP have tried to claim it's a lot more, but that's simply cleaning out drains after the floods, not investing in upgrades. There's a very big difference. I've had projects on the stormwater list waiting for over a decade, including in Yorongah West, in Sherwood, in Oxley. And certainly, this problem has emerged as a significant one for several households in South Street, Yorongpili, who are at the bottom of the catchment and are being flooded every time in heavy rain. Now, one would have thought that this might be a good option for council to consider as part of the Flood Resilient Homes Programme. And that is something that I've urged council to do, but there's been a big no to that. They still only want to fund this flood resilient homes programme in their own LMP areas and I think maybe added Anala. So Capera, Paddington and Anala. And again, one of the recommendations from Justice Paul De Jersey was to open this programme up to everybody. And it has not been done by this LMP administration. So these householders will probably languish on council's capital works list for decades with no action by this LMP administration. There is no respite for them in terms of resilient homes funding that council could open up for these residents that are being flooded. They have habitable areas that are inundated every time in heavy rain and it is really not good enough. So that's why I'm going to move an amendment to the recommendation that is before us today. And that is item B, page two, paragraph twelve, insert a new sentence. Add, insert a new sentence at the end of the paragraph. Adds this project to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget for delivery.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have item B, paragraph twelve, page two. New sentence to be added at the end of the paragraph. Adds this project to the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget for delivery. That was moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Ah, sorry, Massey. My apologies, councillor. All those in favour, oh, sorry, to the motion.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair.
My apologies, councillor Johnson.
Yeah, that's all right. Thank you. Look, I rise to speak briefly on the motion. It's a very straightforward amendment. There is no hope for these residents if we don't prioritise this stormwater drainage. They will continue to flood every time there is heavy rain. It is disappointing that council has rejected requests for the resilient homes programme. So their only hope now is to upgrade the inadequate stormwater drain that council is well aware of, running between Yorongah Memorial Park and Mullabin Creek. And to make sure that the increase in pipe capacity can alleviate the localised flooding that's occurring in South Street and give some real relief to these residents. Council also needs to improve the the actual construction of some of the drain outlets that are non-compliant. And it's essential that this work is done as soon as possible. It is unreasonable that Brisbane residents, Brisbane residents who don't live in flood areas are flooding because of council's inadequate stormwater drainage investment over so many years. There's been so much subdivision and so many new houses going here. And council's investment in the city's stormwater infrastructure has not kept up to date. So I want to see this project brought forward so these residents in Yorongpili can get some relief from the overland flow and inadequate stormwater drainage that exists in this area. I urge all councillors to support the amendment.
Are there any further speakers to the motion? I see no one rising. We will now put the motion. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being sits in favour and seventeen against.
The the motion to amend item B has been lost. Councillors, please return. Please return to your seats. Are there any further speakers to the report? I don't see anyone standing. No, we will now put the report. All those in favour of the Parks, Environment and Sustainability Report, say aye. Oh, sorry, my apologies. There's no write reply. Thank you, councillor Davis. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee, please.
Mr Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty third of May, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty third of May, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Marks, you've got the call.
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Last week, we had a presentation on school zone enforcement programme presented by our compliance manager and I'm happy to leave any debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Are there any further speakers to the report? See no one standing. All those in favour, say, oh, we'll now put the report. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Committee Meeting.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty third of May, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty third of May, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Howard?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. And just before moving to the report, I would just like to recognise some of the great work that has been accomplished by our Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant Programme since it was first launched in two thousand and nineteen. Widely touted as a novel and innovative initiative by our local government when it was launched, our Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant Programme has so far assisted over three thousand seven hundred individuals across Brisbane at risk of experiencing homelessness. And that has allowed those three thousand seven hundred to gain access to sustainable and importantly, those pathways out of homelessness for which the grant is is there. I just want to speak very briefly about just one of the eleven successful recipients. And that is Beyond DV, which has supported over five hundred and fifty women and have allowed them to gain and maintain employment, access career counselling and mentoring, access housing, undertaking study, training and access financial counselling services. And of these women, ninety percent, that's nine-oh percent, reported increase in self-esteem, confidence and resilience. Seventy-one percent reported an increase in financial literacy and eighty percent reported improvement in their financial position. So through you, Mr Chair, I want to thank all of the officers who administer that programme and thank them for their dedication to a better Brisbane. In terms of what's been happening in Brisbane this week, I'll be very quick as well, but I can't go without mentioning the Cube Effect, which the the grand final was last Tuesday night at the Trifford. And I want to thank John Collins for his continued commitment to this programme and the amazing mentorship that not only he, but so many others have provided this year. This is the ninth year of the Cube Effect and it just keeps getting better and better. I want to say a big thank you to Lucy Courts, who won the Lord Mayor's Live Event Award, and to Zaid for the Innovation Award. Now, I was privileged to see Zaid perform at the at the sort of the preliminary finals. And she's an amazing young woman and I really want to thank each and every one of the participants in the Cube Effect because they are truly making Brisbane a fantastic place to live. I just want to mention briefly a couple of events. Councillor Marks and I went along to the Crime Stoppers Australia Board event last week. And again, the amazing work that Crime Stoppers do right across Australia, but internationally, is is just amazing because all of these people are volunteers. So I want to say a big thank you to Crime Stoppers board members and members right across Australia. On Thursday, we attended National Surrey Day, which I've already spoken of. The Valley Chamber of Commerce, another wonderful organisation that supports small and medium businesses in the in the valley, held their event, which is always a great one to go along to. And of course, on Thursday night, we also attended the two thousand and thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Community Reception. And again, wonderful opportunity for local community organisations to to come along and to hear some of the amazing things that are going to be happening to Brisbane right across in our in our run-up to the Olympics. Friday night, I have to have a big shout out to the Holy Spirit Trivia for using the light space in Fortitude Valley. But they just are such a wonderful school in my local area and have a fantastic, a fantastic way to raise funds for the school. Saturday was the Tenerife Festival. Again, beautiful weather. It was just superb. On Sunday, I attended the multicultural mass at the Holy Spirit Church at New Farm. And again, what a fantastic way for us in this city to recognise and and celebrate all the things that make this city so beautiful and particularly in our multicultural community and sort of reflecting on our guest speaker today as well. That was a great way for us to to do that. We also had the Green Heart Fair on Sunday, which was superb. Again, beautiful, beautiful weather and a big thank you through you, Mr Deputy Chair, to councillor Davis and her team for making it extra special. And then last night, the deputy mayor and I had the privilege of attending the early show announcements for the Brisbane Festival. And so I just want to give a big shout out to Kate Miller-Hikee and Kian Nuttall for Banana Land. So keep an eye on that because I think it's going to be superb. And Shake and Stir Theatre Company for Tay-Tay in the Land of Yaz. And that is extra special because CPL are also sponsoring it. And it's again, a great opportunity for artists with all abilities to be performing in this beautiful city of ours. Moving to our presentation, we had a presentation on the Contact Centre by our fairly new general manager for customer services. And he did an excellent job of taking us through all of the work that the Contact Centre does. As we all know, it operates twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year and delivers so many fantastic services. And of course, we keep winning award after award. keep winning award after award because we have such amazing people who work in our Contact Centre. So a big shout out to all of you if you're listening, um, to know that we really appreciate everything you do because you really are the face of our council and we, um, and we really appreciate the, the manner in which you go about your task and that you truly are dedicated to a better Brisbane. Um, so I just want to mention that between July twenty twenty-one and April twenty twenty-two, eh, council managed just over one million customer service contacts across all channels, covering more than four thousand two hundred services on behalf of council. And I think that says it all, and I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. Is there any further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, just briefly on the role of the Contact Centre in Brisbane City Council. As I've said many times in this place previously, um, usually in end-of-year debates, the Contact Centre is such a valuable resource for the city, eh, and I, and I commend all of the staff for their work, eh, in serving the people of Brisbane. I appreciate the council officers who respond to me when I, eh, notify them of issues, um, after hours and, eh, on weekends, eh, and as well as, um, eh, through my office. Um, there are a couple of things I do want to mention though, um, and this certainly, I, I hope that the Contact Centre staff hear this or someone tells them about this. I am incredibly sad for our hard-working Call Centre staff, that the council administration has removed, um, the ability for you to work in different regional parts of Brisbane and has forced staff to move pretty much to Chermside. It's my understanding there's no one left at Yorongpili, no one left at, I think it's Carandale, and all staff are now being, eh, forced to work from, eh, Chermside. And if that's incorrect, then I'd be happy to hear it, um, but I, I think that is incredibly disappointing because it, it, it adds to the burden for people who have to, eh, drive right across the city to, um, eh, to the other side of the city if you live on the south side, where there were previously two customer contact centres. Eh, I know some officers are still working from home, and it would be really helpful to understand how many, what percentage work from home versus what percentage are being forced to drive to Chermside, um, because I think it is incredibly disappointing, eh, that council is not continuing to support our offices by providing, eh, locations that are easy for them to get to geographically, eh, and I think that's something that council needs to, eh, reconsider. And if there are now, I don't know, ninety percent or eighty percent of people working from home, then I'd be happy to hear it, but, eh, I don't believe that information's been canvassed in the report, eh, and I just want to make sure that our staff are not being done over by this administration, which has happened time after time. Um, we know the Call Centre provides a valuable service, but it doesn't appear to me that the LNP administration is supporting them, um, with the appropriate facilities, eh, needed to do their jobs. Eh, so I'd certainly be interested, might even put some questions on notice about that, and find out how many are still working from home and how many are being forced into the Chermside office. Um, but to the staff out there who are doing their best to assist the people of Brisbane, I say thank you, and, eh, I know that it is not right that you've been forced to go to Chermside, and I'm sorry that that's happened to you.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Is there any further speakers? See no one rising. Councillor Howard, write a reply.
Well, of course, because as usual, um, the councillor for Tennyson has not read the report, talks about the transition to working from home in March twenty twenty in response to the Covid nineteen, nineteen pandemic. And of course, we had many, many people that were able to, um, through you, Mr Deputy Chair, I did let the councillor speak without being interrupted. I wish that she would just show me the same courtesy. Thank you.
But before you get, before you go on councillor Howard, I will remind the whole chamber that we are to listen to speakers in silence. Thank you councillor Howard.
So through you, Mr Deputy Chair, I would, eh, say to the councillor for Tennyson, not true. Um, they, the, the Contact Centre, we, we so greatly value our Contact Centre staff, and they have the most flexible working arrangements of any part of council. So, you know, through you, Mr Deputy Chair, for a moment there, I thought that, um, the member, the councillor for Tennyson was actually going to say something positive about the fantastic work that each and every one of our officers in council strive to do. They really truly do strive for a better Brisbane, and it is must be absolutely heartbreaking to hear week after week after week the criticisms that are set a- against them. And I just want to say through you, Mr Deputy Chair-
Point of order.
Thank you to each and everyone.
Point of order.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Thank you. Noted councillor Johnson. Um, councillor Howard? No, thank you. Councillor Johnson, your, eh, point of order, please.
Yes, thank you. Eh, eh, councillor Howard falsely and deliberately misrepresented me when she said I was being critical of officers. Clearly, I was supportive repeatedly of the council officers and the work they do. I was not supportive of the LNP's decision to force workers to go to Chermside.
Point of order, Mr Deputy Chair.
Point of order.
I have already stated that that was not true.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, point of order.
Yeah, point of order councillor Johnson.
Yeah, um, what was that? Because that wasn't a point of order. That was just, that was just criticism. So are you going to address councillor-
Councillor-
Are you going to address councillor Howard?
When I am speaking, chamber, everyone else is quiet! Councillor Johnson, councillor Howard sat back down.
Councillor Howard stood up, Mr Deputy Chair-
It was not a valid-
-made an interjection-
Councillor Johnson, I-
And you have not taken action against her-
Councillor Johnson-
So I'm just wondering if you're going to do so.
It was not a point, valid point of order. Councillor Howard sat, sat back down. Right, it was done. Are we to report the report or are we going to argue? Councillor, councillor Cassidy, if you've got something to say, can you please do it into your microphone?
Okay, point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
You are to rule on points of order. Councillor Howard got up, said, point of order, you called councillor Howard, then you just said to councillor Johnson, councillor Howard sat down, so therefore you decided not to rule on it. I think there does, there's, under the meeting's local law, you are required to rule on points of order.
Thank you for reminding me. Are we to put the report? Well, would you like me to make a ruling on your point of order? My ruling is, is that councillor Howard sat down and forfeited the point of order. Can you put- You, councillor- Sorry? Would you like to go to the vote? We would like to go to the vote. Are we going to continue with this or what are we going to do? Councillor Cassidy? Oh, no, I'm in charge.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
I, my point of order before and this one is to seek your ruling on councillor Howard's point of order.
And councillor-
You can't just say they forfeited a point of order.
Councillor Cassidy, I made the ruling.
Or I might just forfeit this one.
You just did not listen. You did not listen. Councillor Howard sat down. Right. We're going to move the report. Feel free councillor Cassidy, which is your right. Eh, all those in favour of the report say aye?
Aye!
All those against say no? The ayes have it. Can I ask for silence in the chamber, please? Councillor Cunningham, finance and-
Thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-third of May, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-third of May, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Cunningham, you have the call. Right. We will now move the report. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those against say no? The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item six on the agenda. Councillor Johnson, could you please move your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair.
My pleasure.
Eh, I move that this council appoints councillor Nicole Johnston to fill the vacancy on the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Cassidy that councillor Johnson fill the vacancy on the Parks and Environment and Sustainability Committee. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call.
Yes, thank you. Eh, as I found out, eh, about a week ago, um, councillor Cassidy has decided to step down from the Parks, Environment and Sustainability Committee, and it is something that I had spoken to him about previously. Um, at the last election, eh, the LNP, eh, appointed me to a committee with councillor Adams, as we've seen from her behaviour today and in previous, eh, months and years. Eh, I do not want to be on any committee with, eh, with her. It's, it's not appropriate. Eh, so I resigned from that committee, and I've only been on one committee all year. Eh, in response to this, um, where there was the opportunity to appoint me to other committees, eh, the LNP has refused to do so, and a number of, um, Labour councillors are on three committees, including the opposition leader. Eh, the Lord Mayor is only on one committee, eh, E and C, and the, the opposition leader has been on three committees, um, and, eh, I think it is, eh, only appropriate that I actually, eh, contribute by going on to two committees, like every other councillor. I think councillor Griffiths on three committees. So he'll be the only councillor left on three committees? Oh, oh councillor, oh, you're on, you, you too councillor Strunk, you're on three committees. So, um, it's not reasonable that some councillors are being asked to perform a higher wor- workload whilst I am offering to take on, eh, the spot on the Environment, Parks and Committee, eh, to, um, pick up some of the, eh, the workload. Um, I've been on this committee previously, eh, eh, for many years, and I note last week in the urgency debate, eh, that councillor Davis said I don't come to her committee. Well, I haven't come for the last couple of years, but for the previous term, I sat behind her in the chamber, eh, in the, eh, committee room. She would sit at the head of the table facing the TV screen, and I would sit behind her in the visitor area, and I attended almost every, um, meeting. Eh, and it's very disappointing to hear her stand up and say, I don't come to her committees, because I've done so for many, 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 many years. And yes, she has a back to me because of the way in which the room is configured. Eh, so perhaps she was unaware that I, eh, I have attended her committee many times. Um, but it is really unreasonable at this point that the LNP, um, eh, would rather have a vacancy on the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee as they did this week, eh, than to appoint me to a second committee, which every single other councillor in this place, Liberal, Labour and Green are on at least two committees. I am the only councillor that is on one committee. Um, it is unreasonable that the LNP are applying, eh, this ridiculous rule where they won't appoint me to a second committee. There is a vacancy. I am happy to do it. No one else has put their hand up to do it, and I encourage all councillors, eh, to vote, eh, and to appoint me to fill the vacancy on this committee. For anybody who's watching and listening, eh, we don't get paid extra for these committees, so if I was a slacker, I could just sit back and go, well, no, I'll just be on the one committee and I won't worry about it, and I'll, I'll just go out and do whatever I'm going to do. I mean, I've been using the time productively. I do file requests. Poor, poor Lily up there in Level Eight's used to seeing me on, eh, Tuesday mornings. Eh, and I've also had a lot of time to get out to my community and do things as well, so it's been very helpful. Eh, but it's not reasonable that every other councillor in this place is on two or three committees, and the LNP, eh, will not support me being on a second committee, eh, on the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee. I just, there's just no reason to have a fight about this. I am prepared to do it. No one else has put their hand up to do it. Eh, it is an opposition or an independent green spot, eh, and every other councillor in the Labour Party or the Greens is on two or three committees. Eh, so it is not reasonable that I am denied the opportunity to be on this committee, so I urge all councillors to vote for it.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Are there further speakers? Councillor Landers?
Thank you Chair. I rise to speak on this motion. It's disappointing we have to spend time on this motion this afternoon, given the history of Labour and independent councils when it comes to committees. Just last week, we heard from councillor Johnston crying poor that she was only on one committee. But what the councillor failed to report was this circumstance was of the councillor's own doing. Councillor Johnston put herself on one committee only. After the twenty twenty election, new committee chair and members were passed through this chamber, and shortly after that, we got notice that councillor Johnston had resigned from the planning committee, something which the councillor chose to do herself. So it's not this chamber's fault that councillor Johnston sits on one committee. It is the councillors alone. But in addition to this, the situation we are dealing with right now has been created by councillor Cassidy's complete disinterest in this city's environment, and understanding of what it takes to keep our council carbon-neutral. His resignation is the clearest indication yet that Labour have ceded further ground to the Greens, abandoning what was once fertile ground for them. I wonder what the Labour Party in Peel Street would think of their leader in council actively resigning from posts and not installing one of their own on the committee, but instead replacing themselves with an independent. This opposition is a shell of their former selves. As the chamber is aware, there have been a number of recent movements in this place when it comes to the replacement of councillors. We know that councillor Toomey will assume the role of Chair of Council in the not-too-distant future. This will create some vacancies within other committees. Much like we gave councillor Johnston the opportunity to return to her post on the planning committee, we are open to councillor Cassidy returning to his post on the Environment Committee. Until that time, I move that we lay this motion on the table so the request can be considered at the next shuffle of committee membership.
Seconded.
We have a motion to lay this motion on the table, eh, moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hammond. All those in favour say aye?
Point of order, point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnson?
Yes, I just want to check, um, the legality around the meeting's local law, eh, and whether or not, um, it is appropriate for, um-
A procedural motion?
Eh, no, 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 not a procedural motion. Eh, I'm seeking a ruling from you, I should have stated, eh, that, um, there is a vacancy on the committee, eh, the, um, I'm just not sure if there is a rule that specifically says that you have to have more opposition or non-aligned councillors, because there's currently four versus one. So, because I'm, I'm seeking a procedural, I'm seeking procedural advice about whether or not the delay to reappointing someone from the committee is legal under the meeting's local law, given the constitution of committees. That's what I'm seeking.
Eh, can you give me just one second on that councillor Johnson?
Sure.
And would you mind turning, thank you. Eh, councillor Johnson, to address your question, under fifty-six A, there is no allocation around how many councillors can sit on the committee and/or which political parties they come from. We'll now go back to the vote, and with the vote is just to remind the chamber that we are lying this motion on the table. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those against say no?
No!
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right and nos to my left. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and seven against.
The motion has passed to lay councillor Johnson's motion on the table. Councillors, are there any petitions? I see no one rising. Councillors? Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? I see no councillors rising. I see no councillors rising. Councillors, general business. Councillor Whitme, can I remind the chamber before councillor Whitme speaks that this is councillor Whitme's first address to this chamber? And as is tradition in this place, the councillor's first speech will be heard in silence. Councillor Whitme, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land in which we are meeting this evening. I pay my deepest respects to owners past, present and emerging and thank them for their continued custodianship. In my thirty-three years, I have been blessed to live in a variety of different places throughout Australia's east coast. No matter how far I went, I always found my way back to our beautiful city. Settling on the Bayside with my husband, our son Teddy and our puppy Tigger was the single best decision that we made. The Winham Manly Ward, which includes Winham, Winham West, Manly, Manly West and Loda, is home to not only some of the most beautiful parts of our city, but also some of the nicest and welcoming people our country has to offer. And I am both honoured and humbled to be representing them here today. And I look forward to following in former councillor Peter Cumming's shoes and knocking on their doors, seeking their support, sorry, seeking their input into how we maintain our unique nature of our community while building a better city for us all. Peter Cumming's shoes are going to be hard to fill. A life full of service to his community, a life of door knocking and listening, of hearing the needs of an evolving community, once characterised by wharfies and metalworkers, and now by increasing numbers of young families and professionals. I'm sure this chamber has heard others talk of standing on the shoulders of giants. But in Peter Cumming, we couldn't imagine a bigger set of shoulders to stand on. I hope I can live up to his commitment to our community and our city. As we hurtle towards 2032, we need to acknowledge the opportunity that the Olympics presents to showcase our city, not just our love of sport, but for our lifestyle and approach to life. But demonstrating our inclusive and welcoming hearts means that we need to focus not just on delivery of a sporting event, but ensuring that no one in our community is left behind. We need to ensure the cost of the Olympics is not a failure to deal with the more everyday issues of civic life, dealing with congestion, fixing our dangerous intersections and ensuring that essential workers aren't forced out of our city because they can't find affordable or appropriate housing. I truly believe that our communities are what build us up, the communities that we live with and the community we build around us. With that, I'd like to acknowledge to some of the community I have around me. My husband, my cheerleader, my greatest advocate. Blaze, without you, I wouldn't have half the life I have now. You found me at a point in my life when I didn't think much of myself at all. And because of you, I live each day fighting to ensure that it is better than the last. The village that I've built around me has given me the strength I need to be here in this room tonight. The formidable Queensland Labor Party, the mighty United Workers Union, my family and friends, of which there really are too many to name. I want to give a special thank you to the local Labor branch members who support me, challenge me and encourage me every day. To my supporters who hold me up, my husband Blaze, my mother, my siblings Peter, Veronica, Christopher, Joanne, Jamie, Billy, Kim, Dan, Julie, Brad, Annie, Stephen, Charmaine, Regan and Nicole. My life is better because you took a chance on me, because you're here with me. Most of all, I thank the residents of Winham Manly, without whom we wouldn't have a ward to protect. I promise to consult with you, work with you and open myself up to feedback. Divided, we achieve nothing; united, there is no stopping us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Whitme. Congratulations and welcome. Councillors, is there any other further general business? Councillor Landers.
Thank you Chair. Chair, I rise to pay tribute to a well-loved and respected local and former Brisbane City Council Parks Inspector and Coordinator, Hank Horshner, who passed away on the twenty-first of May, aged ninety. Until recently, Hank lived at Brackenridge with his wife Denise and was well-known in the neighbourhood due to their beautiful cottage garden in Wickfield Street. In fact, I first met Hank and Denise when I attended one of their presentations on cottage gardens at the Mount Coother Botanical Gardens over fifteen years ago. Denise has written several books and Hank provided the illustrations, as well as other publications and various radio and television appearances. The foreword of one of my treasured copies was provided by Ross McKinnon AM, curator of Brisbane Botanic Gardens. And it reads, "One of the leaders in the cottage garden movement is Denise Horshner, who with her long-suffering husband Hank, and in brackets Hank and I were colleagues and friends, some years ago invited me to view their Brackenridge garden. What I saw convinced me that these were worthy gardeners indeed to enter their garden in Australia's open garden scheme. Many garden clubs paid visits and Denise was encouraged to speak publicly on their considerable successes in the cottage gardening world. Her lectures have become an institution in themselves, peppered as they are with the vicissitudes of gardening, as well as a good-humoured poems about her husband, who has become known as the Butcher of Brackenridge, for his pruning prowess in her garden." Yeah, he would get carried away, so she had to monitor him.
I'm happy you clarified that councillor Landers.
Denise is always hugely generous with seeds, cuttings and patient advice gleaned from meticulously kept diaries of her gardening progress. I know the residents of Wickfield Street were sad to see the couple leave the neighbourhood recently to move to assisted living. And as an avid gardener myself, I miss visiting them in their garden and receiving the seeds and the cuttings that Hank would kindly hand out. Hank was an active volunteer for most of his life to many community groups, including his two biggest passions as a justice of the peace and as the Lions Club International. Many residents will have met Hank at the Sangate Courthouse, where he regularly volunteered his services as a JP. And for forty-plus years, Hank was a member of the Baden, Aspli and then Brackenridge Lions and involved in establishing the miniature trains at McPherson Park. He was also part of the Brackenridge Lions, who worked with another local legend, Rod Chiopolo, to dismantle an old playground at McDonald's and move it to the Lions camp, Duckadine, in the Brisbane Valley. He was involved with the Brackenridge Lions in planting the trees in Ferguson Park in time for the opening of the first Brackenridge Library. Hank was a recipient of the Lions Melvin Jones Award to recognise outstanding individuals who embody the nature and purpose of lionism. Another very longtime member of the Lions, Jeanette Mitchell, commented at Train Day just last Sunday, that Hank was a genuine naturalised Australian who embraced his new country and leaves a lasting legacy. Hank also took people bushwalking at Mount Coother in the nineteen-sixties. He was involved in the Ithaca Creek revegetation and bicentennial projects with Greening Australia and served on the board of the Tall Poppies Gardening Club. He was also involved in Scouts and Girl Guides and the State Emergency Service. Hank's sons David and Andrew delivered the eulogy on Friday and said it was in the SES in nineteen eighty-three on a call-out during a storm that Hank broke three vertebrae in his back and he was nursed back to health by their mum Rosemary after spending twelve months in hospital. Hank also served on the board of the Endeavour Foundation. Denise's daughter and Hank's stepdaughter Carolyn, who has now passed away, had special needs and Hank did advocacy work for parents in similar circumstances and was tireless in this regard. Hank's community service took a backseat in two thousand and twelve when Denise became a paraplegic. He cared beautifully for Denise and also for her garden. Hank joined the Liberal Party in nineteen sixty-four, where he has remained a member of the LMP and even nominated, I believe, for the council seat of Baruna, now Paddington. Hank was a great supporter of me and I had many conversations about our area and about politics. He was very kind and generous of his time and I'm so grateful for his friendship and wisdom. Thank you. Another local legend, former Brackenridge Lions member and longtime LMP friend and friend of Hank's, John Stopford, said to me on the weekend, he said he and Hank had numerous conversations about death and they both had a mutual respect for the last step in their respective lives. I want to give my condolences to Denise, Hank's sons David and Andrew and daughters Linda and Karen, Denise's children Ron, Debbie and Andrew and all of his grandchildren. Let me just finish, if I can, by reading a dedication that Denise wrote in the front of the book. "This book is dedicated to my husband and constant helpmate, my treasure, who is thoroughly deserving of the name. Without him, I would not have the garden that has been written about in this little book. Without him, I would not have this book. He has sat for many, many hours doing the little illustrations. Hardworking and ever patient, the numerous demands made upon his time, he thoroughly deserves all the accolades that come his way. As I have said, he truly is my treasure."
Thank you councillor Landers. Further general business, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Deputy Chair. I wish to speak on a local matter, the Brighton flood study. It's been sixteen months since the February twenty-twenty-two flood disaster, one where our community was left dangerously exposed with a lack of warning, lack of sandbags, no road closures and no local evacuation centres. People are still seeking answers and residents want to know what council is doing to mitigate future flood disasters. So that's why I welcomed over twelve months ago now, the announcement of a Brighton catchment flood study. But the question is, why has that taken so long? Many months have passed before consultants were even engaged and that slowed the whole process down. There have been no updates to the community over the last twelve months. Leaving residents in the dark has become a bit of a nasty habit for this LMP administration, we're discovering. We need that study complete so we know what upgrades can be prioritised to mitigate against future flooding in the Brighton Creek catchment area. It's all well and good for the LMP to talk about fancy restaurants on bridges over the Brisbane River and glitzy inner-city projects, but flood-affected locals in Brighton and across suburbs everywhere in Brisbane are left to wonder where they rank on this Lord Mayor's priority list.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Are there any further speakers in general business? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you Deputy Chair. Before I speak about the mighty Winham Manly District Cricket Club and the Winham Wolves down at Carmichael Park in Tingalpa, I wanted to share a horrific event that happened in my ward on Sunday night. Around nine PM, a house on Malloy Road caught on fire due to Amelia's iPhone twelve overheating and catching on fire. This set the main bedroom of the house alight. The family were home but didn't realise. A car passing by honked their horn and ran into the house to start alerting the family and help save their children and dog. The family's home was not insured, due to the last payment for their house and contents insurance bouncing back, but they didn't realise. So they are in an awful situation. Our community though has been honestly incredible, offering their home, another offered them to come and live with them, others have offered home appliances, food and other household staples to get them back on their feet. I also wanted to thank the former councillor for Morningside, Cara Cook, for being an incredible friend and support to the family. Yesterday, when I turned up, she walked me over to my car, started giving me the download on what their current situation was and walked me inside to the neighbour's house to let me know how they were going and how we could help. She was having the logistics all figured out and she's still contacting with them today and she's been honestly incredible. So thank you Cara. But firstly, I just wanted to correct the record about last week. Councillor Cassidy mentioned that the Murray Re Recreation Reserve upgrade, known as the Brisbane International Cycle Park, was on the chopping block. Well councillor Cassidy, I can assure you that we have been hard at work there for three months and it is certainly underway and I cannot wait to open it next year with the Lord Mayor. Now to Carmichael Park. Last year, like many of our sporting clubs right across Brisbane, the Sea Eagles and Winham Wolves clubs were smashed by the floods. Their lighting towers, game day screens, clubhouse, change rooms all went under. But from that very moment, we stood outside on the deck in floodwaters and Rabby taking off his gumboot, pouring out the water and he started to laugh. He has been nothing but incredibly hardworking and he immediately started to plan on how he was going to rebuild the club. And both president as well, Graham, has also had the same attitude. Over the past twelve months, the Winham Manly District Cricket Club have fixed the flood damage to their clubhouses. They've improved drainage on their fields and they are still working on a new maintenance shed, fencing, cricket nets, lighting and other major upgrades to their clubhouse, with the addition of a second story so they are able to cater for their booming female cricket programme. And the Winham Wolves are also kicking goals. They've knocked down the old Morton Bay Sports Club and have decked out the space with demountable buildings and temporary fitting rooms whilst they are designing and rebuilding their new clubhouse. But thank you to Rabby and Graham for pouring your heart and soul into these upgrades. As volunteers, you are giving so much to our community and we are so lucky to have you. And Chair, or Deputy Chair, I also wanted to take a moment to thank a very special member of our Brisbane City Council family, Mitch from our community facilities team. Since the clubs received the funds to help them rebuild in October, we held a roundtable meeting in Brisbane Square and Mitch started helping the clubs immediately. Every time I have called Mitch or one of the club presidents have called Mitch, he has been terrific in helping them and getting them what they need and trying to get them what they want to achieve. So thank you Mitch for helping support Rabby and Graham. We still have more to achieve down at Carmichael Park, but I can't wait until these upgrades are complete because it will be one of the best sporting precincts in Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Atwood. Deputy, councillor Strunk.
Thank you Deputy Chair. I rise on a couple of matters tonight. First, one is in regards to a phone call I've received from one of my residents in the ward and the other one is an event that's coming up this weekend. Let me first commence with that phone call that I received from a resident who wanted to discuss the Tuwong Cemetery. And of course, this is Brisbane's premier cemetery. Heritage listed, of course. Sorry? Yes, yeah. Heritage is listed. It was established, and you know, in doing a little bit of research, I found that it was established in eighteen seventy-five. Forty-four hectares, wow, that's big. When you consider the botanical gardens at Mount Coother, it's only, it's fifty-six. It has four thousand six hundred graves, which is a fair amount as well, I would think, compared to other cemeteries. And it's of course Queensland's, one of Queensland's largest. There's three governors, two premiers and of course the first mayor of Brisbane that are buried in the Tuwong Cemetery. So when I received that call from the constituent, he was quite upset because a number of sites at the cemetery have some of his family members interred. And he started to go through a list of issues that he's had with the condition of the cemetery, not just around where they're, where they're interred, but other places as well. He was talking about the lack of proper mowing, whipper snipping as well, of course, the tree care, some of the trees, canopies probably need to be raised, the topping up and levelling of the graves, some of the older graves, of course, there is some subsidence that happens. And of course, the lifting and levelling of the subsided plaques as well. And also the cleaning up around unwanted flowers around the grave sites. Now, all those issues are on the Brisbane City Council website, it's stuff that we are responsible for. So this was a couple of weeks ago, so it gave me the opportunity to pop into the cemetery a week or so ago and just to have a quick look around the cemetery and just to see what he was talking about. Now, granted, there are really good, well-looked-after sites within the cemetery and, you know, whether they be, you know, some of those really special sites, you know, with tombs and things like that, or just your normal, you know, plaque type of grave headstone. But generally speaking, if you have a look right around, there's a lot of care that is not being taken. And I'm just happy, you know, it's good that the councillor responsible, Vicky Howard and of course the deputy chair as well, James McCarrer, in the chamber to take note of this particular residence's issues. I would hope that you probably do an audit of the cemetery yourselves and have a look at the conditions now. There has been a little bit of a catch-up, of course, with the mowing and the whipper snipping because the grass isn't growing as quick. So a lot of, you know, they've been sort of trying to get on. So a lot of, some, you know, they've been sort of trying to get on top of it. But obviously, the resources that are needed to look after these forty-six hundred, forty-six hundred graves, right, is not enough. And it's not like it's increasing in size and scope. We're looking after the same amount of, of grave sites here because there's no new sites being opened up. So I would just hope that, and I, I said to the constituent that I would raise this in the chamber, as I did tonight. Also, just briefly, the, there's an event happening this weekend, the dragon boat race. The Huck Society is putting it on. And it's a, it's a great, if you, if you've got some time and if you haven't been there, and I know a number of councils have come along and, and taken part in watching the event instead of paddling, including me. And it's, it's a really good, it's a really good event that's happened here in Brisbane on a yearly basis out at the Forest Lake Park precinct. And I'm just encourage you maybe to come along if you haven't been there before to see what it's all about. Thank you, chair.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I just stand to remind everyone in chambers that the petition to allow animal wildlife strikes to be recognised as reasons for lowering the speed limits through the MUTCD closes on Thursday and I ask all councillors to please push it out again through your socials to get the signatures up. I know councillor Griffiths mentioned last week that he is going to sign it. I hope he has, I hope he shared it because it's just as important in Tuie Forest as is White's Hill, at Brackenridge, to Deegan, to Pullan Vale and everywhere in between and the rest of the state. It's not just about Boundary Road, it's for the MUTCD as well. I want to take this opportunity to thank the Koala Society that have done some fantastic letterbox dropping and also the advocacy of the Save the Koalas and Walas of White's Hill Environmental Conservation Organisation in getting the word out. The petition has now got over four thousand five hundred signatures. Love to hit that five thousand by Thursday. So please, everybody, share it and make sure that everybody can share the love. It could make a huge difference to wildlife strikes across the state.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Collier.
Thank you, Chair. I am extremely proud that the organisation Food Bank in Queensland calls the Morningside Ward home. It was founded over thirty years ago by Clem Jones, Ian Brusasco and David Muir. They recognise the need for food relief in this city. I first witnessed food insecurity myself when I was in my late teens or early twenties. I was working as a teacher aide in an inner-city state school. What was really confronting to me is that there were children who were coming to school. They were in year one, year two. They had little to no food in their lunchboxes. That is an experience that I found extremely confronting. It has stayed with me since and it actually is a big motivator to why I have committed my life to bettering community and supporting those who are less fortunate than us here today. I believe that no person should go hungry. That is why I'm a very, very proud supporter of Food Bank and I recently visited their warehouse down in Morningside with David and the acting CEO Jill Mead. This incredible organisation partners with over three hundred and fifty charities in Queensland to provide food relief and low-cost groceries, feeding literally thousands of people. When I visited, one of the things that really struck me was it's a massive warehouse and they told me that every four days, the entire contents of the warehouse turn over. What that tells me is that there are people who are experiencing food insecurity who never have before and they now really need that support. There are an increasing number of people who are experiencing hardship. These are people who work multiple jobs and they are struggling to put food on the table to feed their families. It is why organisations like Food Bank are so important. I want to thank them for the important work that they do. On the Norman Park Ferry, residents in the Morningside Ward know that traffic congestion is a real challenge to our community and in only a matter of weeks, the Lord Mayor will hand down their budget. There is something in, in this budget that my residents in my ward are really hoping to see included. And my community says, bring back a Norman Park Ferry service. This is a service that was cut overnight by the LMP. No consultation, no notice. I take that interjection, no one cares. Tell that to the literally thousands of residents who protest this. They came to a community meeting, you weren't there. Yes, yes. And might I add, the Norman Park Ferry Action Group have made representations directly to the Lord Mayor, directly to the relevant committee chair, and they, those pleas go ignored every single time. Residents are literally begging and pleading with the Lord Mayor and this LMP administration to bring back a ferry service. So, you know, and, and I stand with them. Let me be extremely clear, I stand with my community on this. I am extremely hopeful.
Councillors, please. Councillor Collier, please continue.
I am extremely hopeful that in the upcoming budget, as well as an upgrade to the ferry terminal, that a ferry service reinstated, will be reinstated into Norman Park for those residents. You do not reduce traffic congestion by cutting public transport services. I also stand with my community in calling for a major upgrade to the dangerous Passion Street intersection. For too long, more than ten years, the community has been calling on the LMP administration to upgrade this dangerous intersection. This is a road that has multiple primary schools. There are sporting clubs, there are playgrounds, there are thousands of pedestrians who use it every day. There are schoolchildren and their families who use it every day. There are young families, people with young children and prams. They use it every single day. Residents are constantly approaching me, asking, please, when will the Lord Mayor upgrade this? Why won't the Lord Mayor listen? I once again ask the Lord Mayor and this LMP administration, please listen to my community who have been calling for this for over a decade. Please upgrade this dangerous intersection. Please do the right thing. There are more and more people choosing to call the beautiful Morningside Ward their home. I welcome them. It is honestly the best place to live. We need to make sure that with more developments being approved, that our local roads and local road infrastructure can cope. More people choosing to call this community home means more pedestrians, it means more cars and it means more cyclists. Lord Mayor, the community is calling. Will you finally listen?
Thank you councillor Collier. Is there any further general business? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, just very briefly on my motion that's been blocked by the LMP regarding the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee. It's very disappointing that the opposition can't have a proper debate about this issue. And councillor Landers, who hopped up and spoke, said there was going to be, we're going to delay this because, for two reasons essentially, in my understanding. One, I did this to myself. Well, yes, I did. I moved the motion to put myself on the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee because there's a vacancy. It is the LMP that are blocking it. And I was very, very, very clear about my reasons why, which is I will not serve on a committee with councillor Adams. And I think from her behaviour again today towards me, you can see why. And it was worse previously. I'd be happy to go on another committee and I, since that time, there's been changes to the chairs. But there are no vacancies on those committees. If there was a vacancy on another committee, I would happily nominate for that. But what councillor Landers has done is essentially say that decades and decades of convention is going to be overturned by the LMP. That they are going to appoint a fifth LMP member to the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee after councillor Toomey steps up as chair, which I didn't know that's what was going to happen. Yes, he's just been elected as deputy chair and yes, the councillor for Hamilton Water has announced he's retiring. But, you know, if it's a done deal, that's great. That's, that's great for you, Mr Deputy Chairman. But there's still got to be a vote in this place as, as much as their massive majority allows. But the big issue is that the vacancy on the Parks, Environment and Sustainability Committee is an opposition Green or Independent vacancy. So what the LMP has said here tonight is that they are going to use their majority to stick a fifth LMP member on that committee rather than, rather than appoint me to the vacancy.
Point of order, councillor Landers.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted. Councillor Johnson.
I know that, I would just encourage some of the LMP women on that side of the chamber to think for themselves, rather than be directed by the deputy mayor who's just happened in.
Councillor, deputy mayor. Deputy mayor, deputy mayor, councillors. Bit of decorum, please.
Are you not going to call out councillor Adams's behaviour again today?
I just called the deputy mayor.
You didn't. It's just, she clicked her fingers at another councillor and interjected.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
I was imitating councillor Johnson's treatment of councillor Massey last week.
That is not a valid. Councillors, that is not a valid point of order. That's okay. I accept your apology. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call. The, the deputy mayor just apologised. Councillor Johnson.
I just.
Chair, point of order.
Councillor Collier.
Will you make a ruling on inappropriate conduct of other councillors in this chamber? It is not acceptable to click at other councillors, whether or not you were imitating someone else.
Councillors.
Will you please rule? Make a ruling and put it on record.
Thank you councillor Collier. I will have a look at the code of conduct and I will give you an answer once I've had a look at that. But in the interim, can we refrain from clicking at other councillors? Please. And for the record, for the record, for the record, councillor Collier, for the record, the deputy mayor apologised. She clearly said sorry. Councillor Johnson, can you please come back to your general business?
Yes. So my point was that the deputy mayor lent over and directed councillor Landers or encouraged councillor Landers to stand up and claim misrepresentation. Now, if the blocking of my appointment to the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee was the reason that councillor Landers gave was because of the changes to the chair and the fact that the deputy chair was going to be the chair and there'd be other changes and they'd make those changes at that time. So there's only two options here. Either an LMP or a Greens councillor, three of whom are new, are going to be appointed to a third committee and I will be left sitting on one committee, which is an unfair and unreasonable workload to those councillors. Now, these are not committees that are paid. There's no value in this for me. It is a matter of equity and fairness and spreading the workload for all councillors. We all have business that needs to be done in this place on a Tuesday, whether that's file viewings, meetings with other people, meetings with chairs, whatever it might be that you need to do. And by appointing multiple opposition councillors to three committees and leaving me as an independent on one is an unfair process by the LMP. Now councillor Landers implied earlier that this was to wait to make arrangements for, for the LMP changes. Well.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Landers.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Through you, Mr Deputy Chair, does councillor Landers know you're actually in the LMP? Because the reason she gave today, very specifically before us in the debate today, was that she wanted to put this on hold until the arrangements around the chair and the deputy chair could be resolved and that she could make some other changes at that time. Now, that is the reason that councillor, well, I'm sorry. It probably wasn't councillor Landers. It probably was an LMP staffer from the deputy mayor's office that wrote this for her and then she just read it out. I apologise councillor Landers. I presume you did not make that up yourself. I must take back my comments.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Landers.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted. Councillor Johnson.
So she did write. Excellent. Thank you for confirming she did write her own speech. This is all her.
I'm not she, I'm councillor Landers.
So councillor Landers.
Just one moment, councillor Johnson. We, we've seen a myriad of behaviour going on here. At the very minimum, we are required under the code of conduct to display decorum and respect to each other's councillors. Now, as part of that, we will address each other by their title. We will not click fingers and we will be silent when I speak and you will also be silent when others are speaking. That is the minimum requirements under the code. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call.
Well, it'll be very good to hear you enforce that going forward, Mr Deputy Chair, because it's not happened today. So the big problem we have here is the reasons given by the LMP for not filling the vacancy is that the LMP wants to wait until you, a member of the LMP, are appointed to the chairman's role.
Councillor Johnson, I just reminded you that you are to address councillors by their proper title. I'm not you.
You, Mr Deputy Chair, will be appointed to the chairman's role and then the LMP will make some other changes. Now, there are no changes to happen on the Labor side. I don't think councillor Strunk is retiring. I don't think councillor Griffiths is retiring and I don't think councillor Cassidy is retiring. And the other three councillors who are here today bringing up the girl power on this side of the chamber very well are brand new and I'm not retiring. So the vacancy, which is a vacancy from the opposition Green or Independent side.
Councillor Wines. Councillor Johnson.
The vacancy, which is on the Independent, Green and Labor side, has to be filled from this side of the chamber. So either the LMP are planning to put one of their own representatives into that spot, putting five people on the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, which would be highly unusual. I mean, four to one is a pretty clear majority, five to one is, you know, excessive. Or they're planning to force a third chairmanship onto a new councillor on the opposition benches simply out of spite because they don't want to appoint me to the vacancy. I just want to put on the record that the decision to do this, which is clearly councillor Landers's decision, is, is an appalling and short-sighted one. There is a vacancy on this committee. We all have an obligation to participate in the civic life of this city. This is a committee I can contribute to, I have the time to contribute to, I've been on previously. And it is just appalling to me that they send out a backbench councillor to do the LMP's dirty work rather than the chair of that committee standing up and even talking to this matter. So it is really disappointing. And this means that a valuable committee, a valuable committee in this place, that the LMP in their own reasoning was saying, how appalling.
Just one moment, please councillor Johnson. There's a little bit of too much noise coming from this side and I'm struggling to hear councillor Johnson speak. Councillor Johnson, you've got the call.
Thank you. It's appalling that in their, in the criticism by the LMP of councillor Cassidy stepping down as the opposition leader who's already on two committees. Cheap shot.
Councillor Strunk.
Cheap shot. I'll take that interjection, cheap shot. The big problem with that is that the LMP have said how important this committee is and how important it is to have somebody on this committee. But then when there's someone willing to serve, they say no. They would rather have a vacancy than have somebody else on the committee. Rather. And this will go on for months. This will go on for months. And it is appalling that the LMP are playing these dirty, tricky political games rather than doing the right thing, filling the vacancy and making sure that all these committees are properly represented with, it's not even a fair balance. I mean, the LMP controls the majority on every single committee. And yet they can't even allow me as an independent councillor onto one more committee where there is a vacancy. That is how petty and juvenile the LMP is.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Councillor Landers, your three points of misrepresentation, please.
Thank you, Chair. Two of them are the same. And I did not say that we would add another LMP member. What was said, that the, that the committees would be reviewed, simply that. Also, I did not say that I would decide the committee. That is not what my, that is not what I said and it is not my decision to make.
Thank you councillor Landers. Is there any further speakers in general business before we move to the motions? I see no one rising. Councillors, I'll just give you the order of the motions. I see no one rising. Councillors, I'll just give you the order of the motions. We will do councillor Griffiths first, followed by councillor Cassidy's. Now, to remind the chamber, councillor Griffiths has moved his motion and it was seconded by councillor Collier. Councillor Griffiths, would you please reread your motion?
Yes, thank you Mr Chair. I move that, given the extensive community concern regarding the removal of the roundabout at the intersection of Tarragindy Road, Ferndale Road, Homestead Street and Beverly Hill Street, the Brisbane City Council commits to having the new design independently reviewed, taking into account community feedback.
Thank you. To the motion.
Yes, and I raised this motion earlier today because I am getting so much feedback in relation to this particular intersection. In relation to this intersection, we removed a roundabout at this location and we have replaced it with a four-way intersection. I am very concerned, particularly I suppose following today's meeting, but just following my experience with this administration, that this council and this Lord Mayor are not listening. And it seems to be not only on planning issues, not only on roadworks, but on everything. This administration is not listening. And it's running a, it's taking the residents of Brisbane for fools. I stood up earlier today because we have an issue at this intersection. We have an issue with the safety of both pedestrians and vehicle movements. And I've raised this, raised this issue before in this chamber and with chairpersons previously. And yes, I've requested in budget submissions that this intersection be upgraded so that it can be made safer. That's on the record. I have no problem with that. But as a councillor, I don't tell them how to or what the upgrade should be. I take professional advice. And what I'm getting from residents and from the police and from engineers and from academics is that we don't have this right. I'm hearing from people who both use their vehicles and people who are pedestrians that we don't have this right. I'm getting from those people that this intersection is unsafe and they feel more unsafe using what we are doing at this intersection. So yes, Mr Chair and Chamber, I have taken the advice of officers, as has councillor Adams, who is on the other side of this intersection, but there are huge problems with this. So my motion tonight is that we review the information we're given. We review the plans that are given and that we get an independent engineer to look at this. We get an independent engineer to go through, I can tell you, go through the hundreds, hundreds of points of contact or feedback that has come in since we started constructing this intersection and review it and look to see if we've got it right. Because ultimately what I want to see here, and I think what residents want to see here is an intersection that functions for vehicles but also functions for pedestrians. I'm not asking, I'm not asking for rocket science. I have the Minister for Transport, the local member, saying we've got it wrong. He deals with engineers all the time. I have so many people saying we've got it wrong. I want us as a chamber to agree to review this, agree to have an independent review of this, agree to look at what we've done and if possible, where possible, make the alterations so that we fix the problem before we have any problems happen with it. And that is both for pedestrian safety and for vehicle safety. And I do want to take, I know that I've come under a lot of attack for this and I don't mind saying I listen to the community. If I've got something wrong, I'll say it. I'm prepared to do that. I'm actually prepared to go out to the community and meet the community. I was at a public meeting with 70 residents who were angry. I go to public meetings all the time. You won't see the Lord Mayor, you won't see the deputy mayor, you won't see anyone on that side of the chamber.
Councillor Adams.
You won't see anyone on that side of the chamber at public meetings. That was years ago. That was years ago.
Councillors.
Here we go.
Councillors. Councillor Griffiths, please continue.
I am prepared to listen to the community. I am prepared to say we might have got it wrong and I'm prepared to find a solution because I want it safe for pedestrians but I want it safe for traffic. And can I suggest that the deputy mayor might want to be listening to her residents as well because there are a lot of her residents talking to me too that weren't covered in the 40 people who were consulted? So we missed a lot of people in this consultation and by missing a lot of people, I think we missed some pretty big issues. And that's a learning for me. I believe that's a learning for the administration. That's a learning for this council. I'm asking us tonight to listen to residents, to listen to the feedback I'm giving the chamber and to review it independently so that we can fix this problem. Thank you.
Further speakers to the motion. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I rise to speak on this motion. I think the word that councillor Griffiths said quite a bit there was missed and I think that's the crux of this. He missed. He was missing in action. He missed doing his consultation. He missed the point of concept designs and consultation and the opportunity that he has to consult with his community on any programme that we have in council. This full concept design came out in August last year. The consultation feedback came back in November. Seventy-five per cent of the people said no. Seventy-five per cent of the people said no. I was asked if I supported the design to go out to detailed design and I didn't reply because this project was not in my ward. And I made it very clear to the council officers that this is councillor Griffiths' project. He's asked for it in budget. It is in his ward. And they came back and said, oh, sorry, we do realise that. But I did reply and said, I will support and I'm happy to table the email, happy to support whatever decision councillor Griffiths has indicated that he supports. I spoke to councillor Griffiths in the chambers here at afternoon tea and said, Steve, councillor Griffiths, through you, Mr Chair.
Thank you.
But it was casual. We're in the afternoon tea room. I know this is your ward. It is totally up to you. It's your decision what you want to do. It affects mostly your residents more than mine. It's your decision. In full bipartisan support of what councillor Griffiths wanted to do at this intersection. I got the response back saying, we have now met with councillor Griffiths and he has agreed to proceed to the next step of detailed design. Fine by me. I was agreeing with the local councillor whose ward it was. This infrastructure programme is in Maruka Ward. I'm sure I would have been told to butt out if I went against what councillor Griffiths wished for this area. And at this time, it was my understanding that he had made it very clear.
Just one moment, please Deputy Mayor. Point of order councillor Griffiths.
Just want to claim to be misrepresented.
Noted. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
It was my understanding that he'd made it clear in budget requests and emails that council officers had told me that he wanted the roundabout removed, the intersection upgraded. And as I said, I spoke to him personally about it. But now he claims there was not enough consultation done. It does seem something was missed. What was missed was the local councillor. It seems not only was he absent from chambers last session for last year, but he's also absent as the local councillor in the Maruka Ward. Not to mention, the petition before us is incompetent. He can't, the motion before us, sorry, he can't even get the street names right.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor Collier.
Councillors will be referred to by their correct titles?
Noted.
Happy to repeat the statement correctly through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. The petition before us is incompetent because councillor Griffiths can't even get the street names right. I therefore have an amendment to help the incompetent councillor who has presented an incompetent motion today. And it reads, after the words regarding, add the words councillor Griffiths' poor judgment in recommending. Remove the letter D from Ferndale and add a V to make it Fernvale Street, as it is. Remove the letter S from Hills so that it reads Beverly Hill Street, which is the correct name. And after Beverly Hill Street, add the words as one of the highest priority projects for Maruka Ward. The motion will now read, given the extensive community concern regarding councillor Griffiths' poor judgment in recommending the removal of the roundabout at the intersection of Tarragindy Road, Fernvale Road, Homestead Street and Beverly Hill Street as one of the highest priority projects for Maruka Ward, that BCC commits to having the new design independently reviewed, taking into account community feedback.
Seconded.
Point of order.
Just one moment councillor Griffiths. So it's moved by, the motion has been moved by councillor, deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Wines. Thank you. Your point of order, please councillor Griffiths. Ah, councillor Johnson, sorry. Microphone, please councillor. No, no, can you turn your microphone on, please?
Thank you. Yes, I'm seeking a ruling regarding the words councillor Griffiths' poor judgment in recommending. It's actually my understanding that is, number one, the council officers who came up with the plan and in moving this, a personal attack on councillor Griffiths, it's actually an attack on the officers, which I know the Lord Mayor has said he accepts the officers' advice. It's not councillor Griffiths who came up with the plan. So I would seek your advice on whether this amendment is appropriate to be moved, given the fact that it is an attack on the officers, not councillor Griffiths.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Deputy Mayor, may I have a motion to suspend the chamber for five minutes so I can seek legal advice, please?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the, what are we doing? Chambers adjourn for five minutes for you to consider the motion amendment.
Can I have a second, please? We have a motion to suspend the chamber for five minutes by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers so that I may seek some advice. Thank you. Oh, for those in favour, say aye, sorry. Those against, it's been a long night. The ayes have it. Can someone get that door, please? Deputy Mayor, on consideration, would you consider the motion as you've put it as an amendment?
What's your ruling, Mr Chair?
At this point in time, I do believe that it casts a dispersion over another councillor's character and I think it should be withdrawn.
On your ruling, I will change the amendment, but at this point of time, we'll lay the motion on the table until an independent review has been completed.
It's seconded.
We haven't voted on the motion yet. Yeah, we haven't voted on the motion yet or on the amendment, no. Got you, right. Thank you.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Okay, so just to be clear, a procedural motion to lay something on the table doesn't come with debate, but I'm not aware that councillor Adams has any ability to order an independent review as the deputy chair. So either an instruction has to come from the Lord Mayor because he can direct council officers or an instruction has to come to council via a decision of council.
Councillor Johnson.
So I'm just checking, Mr Chair, if the motion lays on the table, no independent review can be undertaken. That's what we're asking to happen.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
No, hang on. Councillors, one point of order at a time, please. Councillor Wines.
Point of order. So I just seek your ruling. The deputy mayor can absolutely withdraw her amendment.
Understood.
She can also absolutely move to put something on the table and I can also provide assurances to councillor Griffiths, the independent review will occur.
Also understood. Going back to councillor Johnson. Correct, it was your first point of order. That would be lovely if actually councillors would bloody follow the rules, but anyway. Councillor Johnson, don't. Getting back to your question, your question was a technical question, one which cannot be answered in a reasonable amount of time, so I don't uphold the point of order at this point in time. The amendment has been withdrawn, the amendment has been withdrawn and there has been a motion to lay it on the table as a procedural motion. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers and we are going to vote on that.
I had an outstanding point of order, a response that I didn't get to question about councillor Adams in terms of misrepresentation. So they got missed somewhere along the line and I would like the opportunity to do that.
Yes councillor, councillor Griffiths, you are right. You do have one point of misrepresentation. Would you care to give that now?
Councillor Adams said she spoke to me outside and we did speak and my understanding was she had been briefed by officers and she supported the roundabout changes.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
That was my understanding. No, that was my understanding of our conversation, which is very different to what was presented.
Councillor Griffiths, thank you.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Howard.
We've heard several times tonight about the word she and I ask that everyone obey the rule.
Thank you councillor Howard.
Your point of order, Chair. Just on that point.
Hang on councillor Cassidy, I haven't called you yet. Councillor Cassidy, your point of order.
Thanks very much Chair. Just on that point, it's become very evident that it's difficult to enter debate without using he, him, she, her. The deputy mayor said he 12 times, his for, him one. Councillor Wines said she, her four times, just in a point of order. Is that acceptable? Can we just say she, her, he, him perhaps? Because for weeks, the deputy mayor's been rising on points of order saying we can't say it. Now this week, now this week, now this week, it's sort of going backwards and forwards. Can we just agree that that's okay?
Councillors. The code of conduct says that you must express or give a certain amount of respect to other councillors. If councillors are comfortable calling he, him, she, then that's fine. We will go with that. But please, I would like to see a little bit more respect given to colleagues within this chamber on both sides. Councillor, your point of order.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Just in regards to the laying on the table, could you please clarify? It is my understanding that within the meeting's local law, that if a timeframe is able to be given for a period to be attached to a motion laying on the table, then that is acceptable. Could you please confirm your ruling?
That is acceptable. We are now at the, we're at the stage of voting at laying this motion on the table, right? All those in favour, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it. The motion will now lay on the table. Right, councillor Cassidy, your motion, please.
Thanks very much Chair. The Albanese government's ambitious $10 billion.
Sorry councillor Cassidy, could you just reread your motion?
Brisbane City Council notes its support for the federal government's Housing Australia Future Fund.
Thank you.
The Albanese government's ambitious $10 billion housing future fund will see 30,000 new social and affordable homes built in the first five years. Future investment returns on that fund will allow more homes to be built for those that need them in the years ahead. Of course, unless you've been living under a rock, you would realise that we are in the grips of a housing crisis. The Lord Mayor himself said.
The Lord Mayor himself said we are in the depths of a housing crisis just today during question time. So everyone in this chamber knows Brisbane is one of the hardest-hit cities when it comes to the housing crisis, that homelessness rates are at levels we haven't seen in this city before. For a decade before the election of the federal Labor government, there was zero dollars invested into housing from the federal government. That's zero dollars for 10 years under the previous Liberal National Party government. Now, this motion is about advocacy, it's not about committing council money, ratepayer money. It's in the spirit of what the Lord Mayor and the deputy mayor have done over the last couple of weeks in calling on other levels of government to act. We've got another level of government trying to act, but at a federal level, we have the Greens, Max Chandler-Mather, the federal member for Griffiths, leading this charge against investment in social and affordable housing, on some strange unity ticket with Peter Dutton, the Nationals and Pauline Hanson's One Nation Party at the moment. The first houses to be built under this Housing Australia Future Fund are for First Nations Australians, for veterans and for women and children fleeing domestic and family violence. So I don't really understand at a federal level why there is such reticence to support this fund that is supported by the entire crossbench in the federal parliament, but all of the national peak organisations around housing, community housing, social services. Everyone sees the need to start the ball rolling, to get federal funding on the ground. And the Lord Mayor and the LNP in here talk a big game. Well, this is just a very simple way, like the deputy mayor described a couple of weeks ago, to send a very strong message from council that the Liberal National Party here in Brisbane, as well as the Labor Party, I'm not sure about the Greens here tonight, support this historic investment in affordable and social housing. The deputy mayor said previously, just pick up the phone, just for us to ring our mates down in George Street over certain things. Well, the Lord Mayor can pick up the phone to his colleague, Peter Dutton, and say, you know, he sits with him on that executive of the Liberal National Party, the Lord Mayor's a very senior member of that party. Pick up the phone and say, Brisbane City Council passed a motion tonight in support of the Housing Future Fund. Why don't you get out of the way and actually support the delivery of social and affordable housing here in Brisbane through this fund? It's very simple, and I think it's something that everyone can support tonight.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Are there any further speakers? councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The Housing Australia Future Fund is still a fund that's in design and debate there in Canberra. The returns from the fund, rather than the total pool of funds, will be used to support grants to support social and affordable housing. One of the key agencies that we will be working to deliver the government's social and affordable housing programme is the National Housing Finance and Investment Corporation. Now, the National Finance and Investment Corporation has a remit to deliver the government's social and affordable housing programmes. They are in the process of engaging with state and local governments to work out how that engagement can fulfil the federal government's ambitions around social and affordable housing. One of the key items that they are pursuing in their engagement with state and local governments is to inform the design of the Housing Australia Future Fund. So it hasn't been landed yet, they're still in that consultancy phase. The CEO of the National Housing Finance Investment Fund is meeting with me and others on Thursday of this week to discuss how local government, Brisbane City Council in this case, can support their objective of delivering the federal government's social and affordable housing programmes. So, given that that meeting will occur on Thursday of this week, I propose and would like to move that the motion lie on the table.
Seconded. So we have a motion for the councillor Cassidy's motion to lie on the table, a procedural motion moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Murphy. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, that concludes the end of the meeting.